The Town of Farmington. Respecting History, Planning the Future.
Good morning. I have to remember not to say good evening, right? It's 9:00 a.m. Welcome to our meeting, the Farmington Town Council Budget Meeting, and I'd ask you all to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd ask for any public comment. And please come up to the mic. And you have five minutes. And please give us your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Matt Hudfagner. I live at the Ford Depot Road. Before I get into it, I was rushing around getting ready this morning. Walking here today, realized everyone's wearing green.
Oh.
St. Patrick's Day weekend. I'm wearing a big red sweater. So I apologize to my Irish relatives out there. As a resident who's only recently started attending these meetings, I appreciate those and share my thanks to those who prepared and presented all the budget materials. It's all certainly very helpful for me to understand what's going on with the budget of our town. You know, I'm here today to support the town budget as presented during Tuesday's budget meeting. As mentioned during that meeting, the theme of this year's budget is maintain. Maintain our town services, maintain our great schools, and maintain our facilities. In my opinion, this is a fair and reasonable budget. Sure, it is increasing, but not by much. And really, it's only to maintain the services we have. The school budget and capital items at the schools are all especially necessary to maintain the services and facilities. As a taxpayer, I get great value out of the town and school services. And any reductions could affect the level of service that taxpayers of town expect and deserve. Especially as a parent with children in the school system, I don't want to see any budget that doesn't, at the very least, maintain the current service levels. I think this budget does that. Any reductions could reduce the level from our schools, from our kids. As a resident parent, and maybe the most important title at a meeting like today, taxpayer, I support the budget and do not support any budget reductions, especially against the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Kalini at 30 High Street. I was thinking about the budget kind of as a whole. And I often come up and I comment on the school side of things. And I was thinking that we have to, you know, that's... Maybe I should be more conscious too of talking about the town side of things. And specifically, I was thinking back to some of the joint meetings that we had, like in the high school cafeteria. And I'm thinking about the survey committee that recently gave us that information about the town and how it would be wise to use some of those answers and results while we shape this budget. Because that's very current information, that's up to date. You know, and it's from a nice broad sample of people, which we don't get, you know, here at these meetings. And so those are voices that they aren't here to speak. But maybe we could consider that they have spoken a little bit on what's important to them using the survey. And what really struck me, and I have to say I was surprised, was the part of the survey that talked about how people got their town information. And I've always read the newsletters. But I kind of did feel like they, you know, might be going out into a void a little bit, you know? And so it was really, I thought it was great to see that so many people said that they got their information that way. And so I started thinking about how, since I've been coming to meetings the last couple of years, and I know that you can learn so much when you sit here in person. And I think about some of the times that misinformation has caused, you know, a commotion in town. You can say the high school in 2017. But even last year, like I'm a resident of High Street, and all that misinformation about what was happening with those lights. And they've made it worse. And Route 4 is for, you know, it's horrible. And you just felt like so much of that information was given to them by somebody, you know, a neighbor or some... It wasn't correct. You know, they had these ideas that weren't correct. And so where I'm going with this is I think we would do the town a service to increase the newsletters perhaps, have more communications directly from the town so that people aren't just hearing what somebody's neighbor told somebody who knows someone who used to be on the commission. Like that's how, you know, everybody's getting their information. And so I would urge you to, as you're, you know, doing the budget today, to make sure that there's a healthy chunk of change for those communications. Because having an informed public, we know they aren't coming to these meetings. But if we could inform them in the way that they say, they told us that's how they get their information. So I think that would be key. Because we all know that there are more issues coming up. And there always will be. That will, you know, head right to the rumor mill and things will get crazy. But you guys have the facts and could share them with that. So I just wanted to put that out there and suggest you do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Okay, thank you. Today, we are going to, we are going to talk about the budget and hopefully come to some conclusions about the budget and moving it forward. We are ahead of schedule. We, the schedule that, the Saturday schedule, we've already gone through. So now we are going to be in our deliberations and questions about the budget. Before we start that, I want to begin by thanking the town council, the town manager and her staff, and the Board of Education, Kathy Greeter and her staff, and the Board of Education themselves. Everybody goes through the last few weeks, last few months, planning a budget, trying to come to a bottom line of what they think will move the town forward and certainly keep services, have the core services in our town. And I appreciate, I know the council appreciates all the time, the hard, the long hours and the hard work that's done to bring us these budgets. And it's always with the best interests of the town in mind. Now it is our job as a council, we are the financial body, to make the decisions about the budget, to move it to the public, to our community, for a vote. But we are the financial body. And it's our job now to look through all the numbers and ask questions and come up with something that we believe the community would like and would, I believe, provide us with the core services and move us forward in Farmington. So with that said, I think we'll start with, we will have a little conversation. We have the budgets before us. We have, I would ask you to go to this sheet, the main sheet. Yes?
Just a point of clarification. I might be mistaken. And I know in the process, we hear about capital at a separate meeting. And we do that before these budget workshops.
But I'm under the, it just seems like we haven't gone through that during these workshops. And I thought last year, we went through the capital requests more in detail. Where are we lined up to do that before we get into the overall budget? Well, what I was going to do actually was talk about the $40,000 that we have not even in our budget, before we go into the budget itself. We do have to put that, that has to be part of our budget. The $40,000, we talked about the pension money. That's not in here yet. And it's not reflected in the bottom line. So I thought before we started, we should have that in our budget. And then we actually have the real number to move forward with. Because it has to go somewhere. But the rest of that, I will absolutely go through all the capital in detail. And we'll go through each piece then of the budget. You know, the education, the town side, the capital, and go through all that. Because we want to talk to Kathy about what things, if there are any changes in her budget. And before we come to any decisions about bottom line, absolutely. No, so...
Thank you.
Okay, yep. Anything else about? And again, the $40,000, which we can have explained to us again. But this is a number that's not in our budget. It's a number that has to do with pensions. And we do, it has to have a home. We've discussed it a little bit during the budget deliberations with the town manager. But again, I would first ask Joe if you could just tell us again the $40,000, what it means. And then we'll go from there. I have a suggestion, so...
As was explained the other evening, the town negotiated with the non-certified employees of the Board of Education to move them to a defined contribution plan as opposed to the defined benefit plan. So starting July 1st, any non-certified Board of Ed employee who is hired would join the defined contribution plan. What that plan calls for is a 6% payment into their defined contribution account by the employee and a matching 6% by the town or the board, by somebody on the employer's side. We attempted to identify how much that 6% match would be in the first year for the employer. And as best as we could come to it, it would be approximately $40,000. And so again, any employee hired after July 1 would have to put in their 6% of their earnings into that, base salary into that. And then the employer would have to put their 6% into that. And it's the $40,000, and it's not included in this budget on either side. So it's sitting out there and, you know, should be dealt with at this point.
Okay. And I would, I know that we did have discussion the other day about where it should go. And quite frankly, right now, I think one of the discussions we had was that we need to have a conversation about this with the board and with the council, just with the, I mean, the town manager, Kathy Greeter. And talk about what best practices, what do we see out there, how we can deal with some of the issues with regard to that. My suggestion today would be to put it in the, where we have the teacher retirement account. And I know there was, this is a new line. Because it's a possibility that we must, I believe, and I think it's in good judgment of us and the town manager, to have it in our budget. Because that's what the governor has said at this point. But also the $40,000, I'm concerned if we put it, whether we put it in the education budget, which I, or the town budget, which I don't think at this point is fair to place it anywhere with. And then that has to do with the percentage or the dollars that are in either of their budgets. So I would suggest that right now, we put it in the teacher retire, in that line. But specifically identify that this is a teacher retirement, is a 256, and that the 40 is a pen, somehow, Joe could, we'd ask him to, and you can give us suggestions, Joe, but somehow identify that number. I do think it's a good idea to have the retirement number specifically noted as retirement number. And because, but part of my conversation, or my, the other day, and some of what I heard, the $40,000 is going to go up significantly, even though the 1.5 may go down, what we already have in our budget. Well, that is going to go down, but much slower. I'm concerned about the impact. And I don't think we know enough right now. So I'd like to look at that. And then after putting a little subcommittee together to look at it, then we'll, we can make, have it come to the council and look and see what we should do with that and how we should address it. So my suggestion is to do that. Put the 40 there for now. And that will change. And then we'd have to have Joe tell us how that changes our budget and our bottom line. So any comments?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Can I ask Joe a question regarding the $40,000?
Yeah.
Joe, based on your assumption of how you came up with the $40,000, a level of confident with that number? I know that you were, guys were working with the Board of Ed in terms of coming up with that $40,000. What is the level of confident of what that number is?
You know, it's difficult to say. There's a lot of variables that are involved with it. It's how many you hire in July, how many you hire in August, how many you hire in March. Because it's, it's 6% on your base salary from the higher point. I'm confident that there's probably going to be 14, 15 hires next year. Will they all take place on July 1st? No. But the assumption that we went on was 14 hires on July 1, everybody makes $40,000. Not every, some people will make 80, some people will make 30. We averaged it out at $40,000 in base salary times the 6%. It actually comes to less than $40,000. Comes to like $33,000, $34,000. But we put another, we just rounded it up to $40,000. So the town's experience was in the first year, we, it cost us $2,000. In the second year, it cost us $12,000. I think the board hires more aggressively than the town does. So I think the 14 is probably a really good number. My level of confidence is probably 60, 65%.
Okay. And then in terms of that analysis, is the assumption that the 14, 15 people that they hire, that they are all participating in the 401K? Just so we understand that the policy is, is that they have to contribute 6% in order for the town to contribute 6%?
Right.
Is it an automatic 6% for them to, so no matter what, they have to pay 6%?
Yeah, it's mandatory. They have to pay the 6% of base salary.
Okay.
And it's mandatory that the employer match the 6%.
Thank you.
Paul?
So just to clarify, Madam Chair, with what you're saying, this would be on its own budget line, would it be merged with the two? And I know we have to talk about the 256. But would it be on that same line? Or would it be a separate line below that? The way you see it?
I...
Or either way, is that something we could talk about?
I think it would be with the 256. How, Joe, what was your feeling?
I mean, logistically, you, on this front page, you would see it merged with the 256. I'm sorry, presentation-wise, you would, right now, it's just suggests merging it in with that 256 and maybe changing the title from teachers' retirement to education retirement or something. Logistically, what will happen is there will be two separate lines, one for the 256 and one for the $40,000.
But on the summary page, it'll be one line, basically.
Or, I mean, that's an Excel spreadsheet. If you want to add another line, you could add another line. It's not, it's not a big deal. I'm just, I'm just looking at space here.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting we necessarily do that. I guess, so, I guess to what you're saying, Madam Chair, I am absolutely fine with that in terms of, while we figure it out, bring it on the front page. You know, I am adamant that the 256, that number, whatever it is, if it does exist moving forward, that that stays on the front page long term. But temporarily, while we kind of figure out what we're going to do with the 40, I'm absolutely fine with putting it there for the time being until we go through that process that you articulated.
Okay. And maybe just having an asterisk saying, teacher retirement is blah, and then this is pension, is this, that would identify it specifically, maybe?
Right.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Just because I tend to always look at past practices. So in terms of past practices, the policy today is because the town has to negotiate some of these retirements today and the old retirement, right? And our contract says that the town is the one that's at the table to do that, right? I'm not necessarily opposed of keeping it separate. I think we should think about, you know, I understand that we're going to probably talk about like what the policy should be going forward. So is that part of the reason why we would want to keep it separate versus putting it in what we do today? And, you know, I think it needs to be talked about. I agree. But is that the right approach, I guess? Or do we go by what we already do today and knowing that we need to discuss this at a future date? I'm just thinking about it out loud, just to get people's reaction.
Got it, Phil.
Sure.
And also based on your past practice, this is a new practice. So I think we have to make a decision. Is this going to go the same way as past practice? Or because this is really a new line item, it is a new way of funding the non-teacher retirements, should it be in that pool or another one? I look at this more as just a placeholder right now. We're setting this $40,000 outside of that while we have time, not when we're trying to decide the entire budget, if that should go in with that same number that's been in the towns or whether that should be a separate line item. So that's my thinking on the separating it all right, right now.
Any other comments? Madam Chair? Yes.
I'm probably repeating my comment from the other night. But I would advocate for the two separate lines, adding that second line that Joe thought maybe just might be an issue with space. But we could talk about doing that, that it wouldn't be inappropriate to do that for the 256 and the 40. Because I think, I see those things as two very different things. One is that it's a possibility coming down the pike that we're trying to plan for and be proactive with the 256. That's the teacher pension, possibly some responsibility being pushed onto the municipalities from the state. And then the $40,000 is kind of internal within our town policies and procedures and where we're going to go with that. So I would just, that would be my, kind of where I am on that. And then the $40,000, whether to put it on this front page as kind of a placeholder. And I almost, it sounds like we're talking about maybe as a reminder or so that it's more clear that we need to revisit it. But I hear what Bruce is saying about, right now, the town supports the non-certified pensions. And so this is really falling in the same line with that. But maybe it makes us feel better to leave it separate because we're kind of in a transition with that.
Other comments? Yes.
Yeah, so I do kind of agree with Beth on possibly having it as two separate line items just for the purpose of having transparency and seeing that that 256 is essentially a state mandate, rather than putting another number in there. The only concern I have with having it on two different line items is how do we, how do we, what label do we put on those two items so that it's not confusing to the public? And I don't know if, Joe, you would have any suggestions as how to label that so that it's not, you know, because they're both kind of similar items in that they're both educational, you know, retirement money. But how would, do you have any suggestions on how you would label that if we were to break it out as two different line items on this page?
You could probably do it a couple of different ways. You could do education, 401, funding, education, defined contribution. You could do it, non-certified BOE employees. And we could, there's, we could clearly come up with a title to distinguish between that and teachers' retirement. And again, we could also just add a line here. It's not, it's not a big deal. So, but we could, we could come up with anything to distinguish between the two. Whatever you'd like to title it.
Paul?
So I don't know if this is a sign for what's coming today, but I actually completely agree with what you guys were just saying. So, yeah, I think we're all saying similar things. And as long as it's not going to make it too cluttered and we can make it work on, at the separate line, I agree. So I'd be fine with that.
Okay. Madam Chair? So, yes?
I, reiterating that I agree. And I think it's important, especially because one is a potential and the other is absolutely coming out of the budget. I'd like to see them separate.
Okay. Yep. So I think we, I think we should have a motion, though, that says we're going to put it in there.
I'd like to make a motion to add another category called education, funding to the tax and budget worksheet in the amount of $40,000.
Education defined...
Defined contribution, defined 401 contribution.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions.
Yeah, $40,000.
Yeah, just for the...
You'll notice my handwriting's improved substantially.
Okay. Now, I thank you for that because that was kind of a given. It just depended where. And now I think we need to go to Joe and say now, where are we at in our budget? Before we even start.
So now you have your $40,000 added, and I'll title it. And then so your budget now is $112,224,627. 5.9 million dollar increase, 5.58%. So your tax increase now is at a 3.86%. 28.24 mils, 3.86%. So basically, you've added 200ths of a mil. Or 200, 200%, 200ths of a percent onto your budget.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Now, are there anything, are there any changes in your, in the capital? We'll go to that, that you'd like to talk about to begin with? Or in your...
Yeah, I think it's good to start with the capital. So a couple of things I wanted to talk about on the capital is, if you wanted to go to the planning department, the $100,000 to the Farmington Village, Farmington Centering, that's $100,000.
The planning department.
The planning, okay.
In the capital.
Yep.
Second page on capital. That's right here, bottom.
Yeah, second page on the book, off the book. So one of the things that Joe and I have been doing over the last couple of days is really going through the accounts and looking at some different things. And one of the things that Joe had brought to my attention last week is that the Farmington Center Improvement Account had 300 and...
$25,000.
$325,000 in it. I was under the assumption that that was our steep money because we got a grant for the same amount of money. And that was put in. Joe reminded me yesterday that, which I didn't realize, is that we've paid for the steep grant already. So we paid for, we paid for the work that the state has already done. And part of the steep grant originally was that we had to do a matching grant, the $325,000. So I wanted to make note that there is $325,000 in that account, which I thought was the steep money, but it's not the steep money. So we've bought this, we spent the steep money. We've already purchased what we needed to do with the state for the enhancements. And so there's $325,000 in that account.
Because we got the grant.
Because we got, because we already, we got, we had to make a matching grant. And that's our matching part. And that money we had appropriated in 2016 or 2017?
2017.
2017. So back when we did the grant, we had to have a matching grant for it. So we had put that money in. So I was under the assumption that that's what that mon, I thought it was the steep money, but it's not the steep money. So good news for that. So I wanted to let you know about that. The other thing I wanted to let you know about is that when, again, when we went through our accounts, if you go to the police department, the communication upgrades...
$135?
The $135. Again, this is another issue that we have, we've received grants for the police department. We have been putting money in that account, in a communication upgrade account. And we've been using the grant money and instead of the money that we've been putting in the budget. So we have money in that account. So that $135,000 is a potential that we can cut that money out of the...
Altogether.
Altogether. I would, what if we say altogether, Joe? We'll check on that. But it's a potential that that's money that can be taken out, too.
Kathy, just going back to the Farmington Center. So you're saying that that would be zeroed out?
I think...
More than the request?
I personally think that, you know, I put it in $100,000 to try to keep the capital consistent to what we usually do. I think that what we've discussed, and I didn't think I discussed it publicly, I don't think that $100,000 was enough money. So I think that I would personally keep that $100,000 in. But I just wanted to let you know that there was more money, if there was any talk of putting more money into that account. Because we did talk about that. I didn't feel that there was enough money in that account. So there is 325 plus 100. I think that really gives us a good start on the things that we need to do with our landscape architect and with our committee. So that's really where I was coming from on that. So other than that...
Back to the $135. Well, how, what about the $135?
$135, how much is in the account?
You need to keep, need to... Need to keep 35 in the account.
35 in the account.
So we'll take 100 out. Okay.
And so, other than that, I don't know if you have any other particular questions about the capital. I think the town side capital is pretty lean. I mean, obviously, if you would like to make any more additional reductions to it, we could, I could probably come up with a priority, depending on how much money, if you wanted any more reductions to the town side of it. Again, I, I think that this is part of our plans. There's a lot of things with our buildings and things like that that are in this that I think are important to keep up with. So I really, I'm not advocating to take any more money out of the capital, but if you guys feel the need on, to do that, I can probably come up with what would be my priority list for things that, you know, I really would not like to see on reductions to.
Oh, Paul, go ahead.
Under the Department Engineering, last item, school parking lot paving upgrades, is it possible that that get bundled with our $2 million bond for road repaving? And that, that has to be separate?
It has to, by legal, you can't do it that.
You can't merge those two?
No, they're disparate account projects, so you can't really match them up, school parking lots.
Even though they're both paving, that, that does not.
The project itself is totally different.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I would like to propose, Kathy, and obviously if, if other council members would like to add things as well, I would like to propose to take out the sprayer in the Department of Westwood Golf Course for $55,000.
And just any other? Is there any, any backup, I guess, to, I mean, you have it in here because you think you need it, obviously?
It's something they use every day, obviously, making sure that there's no fungicide or different things on the course is pretty important, that's one of their key functions. So they, they did request that as something they needed.
If you were going to ask me if that would be my priority, I can't, I would say probably not. If you wanted $55,000, I'd look through and maybe pick something else, but that's, that's, again, your objective.
Okay.
And do we know at Westwood's irrigation versus sprayer, which would be more critical?
I think the sprayer would probably be more critical.
Madam Chair. My understanding of the irrigation is that it also, though, is, would be computerizing and therefore saving the town money on the water budget and water.
Yeah, just to clarify, it is computerized, is what it is, it's to start replacing the underground lines and the heads. Doesn't, it doesn't work if you have old-style heads and you have a computerized system, basically, that they have to talk to each other, and the existing heads don't talk to the existing computer system. So basically, what you do with the software is it monitors the wetness of the ground, it tells you if you need the sprinklers on or not. But if the heads can't communicate with the software, then they're going to come on anyway, it's just basically being on a timer.
So we have the software, but not the right heads?
Right, we, right, we need to start replacing the lines and the heads to make sure that they, they do work together.
Madam Chair. So regarding the sprayer, I, I think I read the note that it was going to be used in other areas, so.
Basically, what would, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but basically, they would get the sprayer for, for them, and then their sprayer would, which is an older sprayer, would move over to the Highway and Grounds Department for the grounds division to use, and their, and the old sprayer in the highway, in the grounds division would then be junked.
Junked. So are both sprayers working today?
Yes, they, they both work.
Okay.
It's not the, I mean, again, it's, I'm sure, you know, it would, it would go for, you know, if, go for another year to 1993, it's a, it's a piece of equipment that they use all the time. If it doesn't make it through the year, we'd find money probably to get that one, because we'd need it, so that's really, but again, it's just deferring it out another year of buying it, so it's, again, not the, you know.
So this one is 26 years old. What about the one at the, the town must be older, if this is the one you're replacing, to then put it to the town?
I'm not sure how old the other one is. I believe it's around the same age, but it's used a lot less than this one is. This one's pretty much.
This one is every day?
Every day, right. Like Erica indicated, it's important for fungicide and for pesticide, things like that. So this one's used a lot more than the other one is used.
So if you don't have this one to use, you'd have more fungus and more?
Well, we would, we would use this one and keep repairing it until we were able to, you know, until we couldn't repair it any longer. I mean, obviously, we, we need to do it, so we would.
Yeah.
Do whatever we had to do to keep it going.
Other questions about it, or questions about, I would just say, anything in here that you want to ask Kathy about, the whole, her whole capital?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, could I go back to the Stone House? We've got $100,000 in for the Stone House. How much do we expect to be completing this year of that $100,000? Is that something we would consider cutting portions of, that we won't get it all done, or where do we stand on that?
This is, again, this is, we would probably try to do all the $100,000, it would be, but this would be an account, again, that if we, if you had 75 in it, we do $75,000 worth of work. It's a, it's a lo, it's a couple of year project, so if you want, you know, again, this would be something, would probably be on the priority for me, that you would reduce that, you know, because it's, it would just take longer just to do the Stone House.
Madam.
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Is there a plan in place as to what would be done this year, using $100,000?
Yep, there is, there is.
We have a, they, we actually did a, hired an architect, and they did a plan, and they gave us a lot of paper, and, and what we're identifying is doing a lot of, some of the exterior work with that first $100,000, some of the more critical exterior work on the building, pointing, painting, facade replacement. There's also that porch on there that needs, needs to be worked on.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So Kathy, so you're saying that if we did do any reduction on the Stone House renovations, that $25,000 reduction giving at least $75,000 would be making progress, but you would be agree, you know, that would be acceptable?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Madam Chair, can I make a motion to, or do we make motions right now?
Well, yeah.
Yes.
If you're going to, basically, if you're going to start to make impacts or changes to the budget, you should make a motion.
Sure, okay, I, I make a motion to reduce the Stone House renovations by $25,000 to $75,000.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question just about, what is the vision and the longer-term goal with Stone House? Because, and I think we talked last year, maybe when Nancy Parent was here, just about some options.
We haven't codified exactly what we want to do for the building. Nancy has been talking about having that be, like, advance the recreation, and we've talked about having a spray park and having some different things, and having that be an office. What we've talked about with the council is basically, the first things that we'd like to do is get it up to speed, get it, maintain the outside and everything like that, but having it be a community space about, you know, the outside porch and some different things where the community can use the buildings. We are still very tight with community space in general. It'd be nice to have something on that end of town, and it does have a beautiful outside porch and the room, so we've been talking about with the interior of making it really just very flexible space, and that's part of the architecture, because it's offices down there, and make it just a big area where, first of all, make it handicap accessible, then have it be flexible space, and then work on the fact that, like I said, about community space and that outside porch is a beautiful, beautiful room, and that we thought that maybe something along the lines that it could be used. And, and even if it's just community space in general, but for recreation, too, there's a lot, camps, summer camps.
Rings a little bit, things like that.
Okay. And when you say community space and that there's a demand, along the same lines as when people need a space, like at the library or the community center?
Yep.
Just being able to offer?
Yep, they'd be able to come and sign, sign the room up.
Meetings.
Yep, everything.
Parties.
Yep.
Gatherings, okay.
Something like that.
I just wanted the bigger.
Yeah, no, that's.
And we also do rent out the apartments upstairs, so we do have a responsibility to keep the building maintained, because we are renting it out for habitation. So it is important to keep the outside of the building maintained.
Mm-hmm. Other questions?
Is, is there an interest about, since you made a motion, Bruce, is there an interest about taking the $100,000 out of that police account?
Yes.
I'll make that, too. Can we finish this one?
Yep. Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
About the Stone House. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to reduce the communication upgrade in the police department's account by $100,000. The new CIP would be $35,000.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, other, go ahead.
Question about one of the three bonding issues, that's part of this, what we're talking about now. I think you can answer, even though it's the Board of Ed one. The, for the East Farms project, $1.6 million bond, we're projecting a 30% reimbursement. If we get that, assuming we get that reimbursement, that comes back to the reserve balance, or where?
No, we don't bond it. What we do is we bond net, so what'll happen is we'll, we'll bond 1.67 million, less 30%.
So, so it's actually, we're only bonding 1 million? About?
Yeah. 1.6, 1.6, yeah, we'd bond about 1.2 million.
1.2 million is what we, that, and that's what shows up as the bond, the bond question?
Right, when you, the bond resolutions, the bond resolutions themselves, when you see them, which, if you approve them today, or agree to go forward with them, at your April 1st meeting, you would approve the bond resolutions and send them to town meeting, and in those bond resolutions, they, they will say that the appropriation, the appropriations reduced by any state grants or other grants that are received.
Okay.
So basically, once we get confirmation that there's a 30% reimbursement, we would reduce the bond authorization by that 30%, and we would only bond the 70%. For example, we're, we're going out to bond next month, in May, and we're doing it for all the school roofs that you approved last year, and we're bonding the net, we're not bonding the full amount, we're bonding the 70% and not the, not the full 100%.
Gotcha.
But you have to, on the bond question, the full amount. It's really getting authority to bond, to spend up to that amount, but if we don't need that amount, we don't bond for that amount, and so.
You have, basically, I'm sorry, you have to show the full appropriation or the full cost of the project.
I got you. And then, I guess, the converse to that would be, if we didn't get the, or we got less than 30%, whatever it was, then we would have authorized the full 1.6. Both us, as well as the general public, will have authorized the full 1.6.
Exactly.
And is there any way to put strings attached where, you know, it would only be the smaller amount, or once we release it, we're releasing the full?
Once it's approved by the voters, it's the appropriation of the 1.6 million, 1.670. So there's no, there's, you can't just say, well, you can only bond 1.3, because the authorization is for the 1.
For the full, full amount.
Right.
All right. All right, thanks.
CJ.
Just to follow up on that, the 30% that we're looking to get from the state, do we have any estimates on the following year? If this was pushed off, would we get 30%? Or is that something we're just guessing on what this next State House will do, and what money they might fund it down?
I don't, I don't, I think that's a big question mark.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Other questions? Yes.
I would like to ask Joe a possibility of a bonding question. It's in the Board of Ed's request. I believe it falls under the, the district-wide mechanical equipment. So they have in there replacing an elevator, which is needed. They also are requesting some renovations for a school. Do you think that there is a possibility of lumping that in as school renovation and putting, moving that portion of the elevator into that bonding question? And if you have to go and make phone calls, I would, I'm very curious if that is a possibility.
My only hesitation in answering that is I don't know what else is in there. I looked at their description and what they submitted to us, and quite honestly, it's not, it's kind of vague as to what, there's $602,000 that they were requesting, and if that's, you know, it.
Can I?
How many, you know, how much?
It's, I believe, just, just, I believe the elevators, based on the book, is about $430,000 out of the 602. Yeah, 430,000 out of the 602. We would take out 430,000 and add it to a bond question for school renovations.
With the East Farms?
With the East Farms.
Bundled?
Bundled, yes.
But you cannot add it to the East Farms. It's not East Farms School.
Union.
Because this is union school, right?
Oh, but you're saying, even though.
Yeah.
In general.
You would have to do another question.
Separate question.
So you would have, you cannot add it to East Farms, because again, that's, East Farms is specific to East Farms. You would have to add another question that basically be similar to the question we did last year, where we said, you know, infrastructure improvements. So, you know, I guess, what you'd probably, again, would have to be a fourth, it would have to be a question separate from East Farms, and we would probably do, if it's that much, the $430,000, I would maybe look at some of these other projects that are in there, that they talk about, and maybe do a half a million dollar bond question. Yeah, you probably could do that.
Joe, just so we're clear, you can't change the title of the East Farms renovation to be more broad and have school renovations and put the elevator in that type of a bond question?
Thank you, Kathy, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, I, this is, this, East Farms is the relocation of the, the offices. This is mechanical and electrical and plumbing. I mean, I could, I could run it by council. You probably, I don't want to say you could do it, but you probably could do it, okay? I, you'd have to change the East Farms to just the East Farms, so, that, because that's more infrastructure repair or work, and this is probably more mechanical, electrical, plumbing, but it would, you know, it possibly could be awarded to be both the same, to be incorporated together.
So then you'd have a $2 million bond.
Actually, you'd have more than a $21,000 bond. A $2.1 million, excuse me, bond.
What's the bond, 1.6 plus 4?
It's 1.67 right now, plus another 4.
Okay.
430, so, yeah.
So it's 2.1. Uh, go ahead.
Kind of just a follow-up to that district-wide mechanical equipment. And I don't know if you guys know the answer to this. Is that, or maybe some of you guys up here know, know this, but is, how much of that, or is all of that directly in the K-8 facilities report, do we know?
According, again, according to what they provided to us, and that $602,000, all but $75,000 is for the K-8.
All but 75?
75, right.
Out of the 602?
And the 75 is the deferred maintenance of the high school?
That's the high school.
That would not be bondable.
Right.
Right, right.
Right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
But except for the deferred maintenance of the high schools, everything else under MEP, bondable?
Based on what I'm reading here, it sounds like everything would be bondable here.
Well, you're, again, just for clarity, are you saying bondable in that East Farms question, if we change the East Farms question, or?
I would, I have a real hesitation that that would actually be acceptable. And I think you would be better off with a separate question.
You were going to do that, right?
If you were, if you were going to do that, yeah, I really.
We were going to add any more than the unit school elevator to the East Farms. Your, your comfort level goes down when we talk about adding.
Right, because these Farms is a very specific project, and it's a large number project. We would basically have to change the title to East Farms in. Into a broader category. You know, and again, the question probably would change totally, probably be something more to the effect, shall we appropriate $2.2 million for infrastructure, mechanical, mechanical, electrical improvements to various schools throughout the, you know, throughout the district? And even though East Farms would be a big component of that, you know, you would have that other $500,000 for the other schools.
Would it say union school elevator? So would it, do you think the question would say union school elevator, and then East Farms also had some, a security aspect to it? Because doesn't that include the vestibule shift?
The vestibule is already approved.
Oh, right.
Approved this, for this year.
It'll happen with the work, but it's not part of the.
Right. All right, the money for the vestibule is actually out there.
Right. So what you're saying, Joe, is kind of that if you, if you wanted to go that route with another, you'd be better off to take the 430 and the 100 that's left, not the 75, I'm saying, leave that alone, that you feel we'd be better off to take that 430 and then that 100, the 3680, 3320, 227, and say, and have a separate bond for MEP of $530,000 for?
Yeah.
And then leave the standalone, the East Farms standalone?
That would be my preference, but I also think that you probably could do it the other way, and combine.
How does that, what does that have to do with, what I'm concerned, what comes to my mind right away, is the reimbursement? How does that, does that all standalone?
I'm not sure how much of this is reimbursable. Obviously, these Farms, they tell us it's 30% reimbursable. I don't. I don't think it hurts. I think eventually what's going to happen is you're going to run into the same thing that we did last year. We're going to have to itemize out each individual project and show the state that we have X number of dollars for each project. So...
Do you think that compromises our reimbursement for East Farms?
No.
That's my, that's what I'm wondering.
No. No, I don't think it compromises the...
Is that, they still look at that as that project?
Right.
For 30%? It's not like?
Right.
Okay, now that you have these, you're...
Basically, what's going to happen is similar to what we ended up doing this year, where we itemized out in your budget.
Oh, you have, yeah, this whole sheet with what was done.
And we added, even though the bond question lumped everything together, we eventually added, separated everything out. That's eventually what we'll have to do, I think, to appease the state.
The question would be for us to think about as a council is, do, how do we think the public would react to that or would be, you know, and that's, I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just...
So, so again, let me just summarize what I think you're all saying.
There's two ways to do it.
So I can understand. So you could, you could take the $400,000, which is the Union School Elevator.
430, yeah.
430, and add it to the existing bond question. But we'd have to change the title of the bond question and change that up.
That was my original question, yes.
That was your original. So that's, I think Joe said that he thinks we could probably do something like that.
I think it would be better.
But?
If you incorporated all of those projects into that question, as opposed to just the elevator, okay?
Okay.
And I, just saying the elevator and East Farms probably is not going to fly, but saying East Farms, Union School, West Woods, saying multiple schools in one question would probably be more appropriate legally.
Okay, so wait.
And I, I'm sorry, I kind of liked that recommendation so far, so.
But I just want to make sure we're clear. So there's 602 in that district in mechanical equipment, but the 75,000 of it is out off the table, correct?
The 75,000 sounds like it's pure maintenance.
Okay, so that's off the table. So 602 minus 75,000 is what?
527.
527. So then, Joe, what you're, now, what you think it's, you're more comfortable with is taking that 527 and adding that to the original question of 1.67. 1.6 million, and then adding 527 to it. And then we're going to retitle that whole thing and call it something different. And so it would be the East Farms office stuff and district-wide MP, MEP, whatever you call it. So that would, that is probably what you've said is the most, you feel the most comfortable with.
Right, that's what I feel, yeah.
Okay.
So it'd be East Farms, Union, no Wallace, West District, and IER?
Whatever in their district-wide mechanical thing that we could do.
And that is 2,197. I'm just throwing that, I think.
Yes.
Is that the number 200 and what?
I got 2.24, what's that?
2.24, you have?
It was 1,670 originally.
Let's do the numbers.
2,197,000.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
2,197,000.
197.
What are we adding?
Yeah.
What's the bond?
Because I had the bond originally at 1.67, and we added 527. So those don't add up. So what am I missing?
So it's, it's 602 minus 75,000, right? So what is, that comes to what?
527.
27.
Right.
000 plus 527000. And what does that come to? To 197.
Do you have your calculator? I'm...
That's what, that's what we calculate.
I got you.
You get it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, CJ.
That's okay.
Our transparenceness, I suggest, are specific when you make your motion, that you reduce that account by an amount.
Yeah, yes. I'm going to work it.
And then make a separate motion to add to that.
So I, I would like to make the motion to reduce that account, and then we, you're going to work on the motion of what, for the...
So basically, I think what we're, what we're doing, and we'll make a formal motion, is that you reduce, you're, you're reducing district-wide mechanical equipment by?
527.
527.
Okay, so.
So that would be?
Can I do that now?
Yeah, I would do that.
I make a motion to reduce the district-wide mechanical equipment by 527,000 with a new balance of 75,000?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Well, just a point of clarification, is mechanical, what is that category? Engineering and?
It's called district-wide mechanical equipment.
Oh, it's mechanical equipment, okay.
It's district-wide mechanical, electrical, and plumbing.
Well, I'm reading whatever's on the book here, so whatever you want me to say.
I'm sorry. Okay, if that's what I wrote.
So there's multiple titles? Which one?
We should use what we've...
It's in the book, what you just read.
The one that I read in the book is the correct title, okay.
Yes.
Okay, yes, CJ.
Okay, I, I want to address the other half of this, because now we've got a 1,2197 bond. What is our total? What's that?
Two million.
Excuse me, 2,197. Obviously, I'm not very good with numbers. Not a good day to be off on my numbers. What are we looking at? Where's our total bond right now? How many bonds do we have?
We have three. I think it's about 5 million.
2 million in roads. What's the, what's the?
One and a half for the fire truck.
1.5 in the fire department.
It was 1.67.
5.7.
And 5 point?
Now we're 2.197.
2.197.
And 2.197, right?
We added half a million to.
Yes.
Well, just to be clear with everyone here, I will be looking to try and get that 2.197 below 2.
Get to what?
Just to be clear and open, I'll be looking to get the 2.197 below 2 if we're doing that as a bonding. So, and I don't know if there's room in the, the school side to do that or not, but that's, I'm, just want to let everyone know right now, I'll be pushing when we're talking about.
You like round numbers, our whole numbers?
I like to be below 2 million dollars.
Below 2 million dollars?
So if we're pushing this in there, that's, before we vote on this, I want everyone to know where I stand on that, because that's the other half of the same equation.
Madam Chair? Yes.
Well, I appreciate CJ's, and I think we, we worked really hard to do that with the roof bond last year. I get concerned about now, because we're moving this to bonding, where we think it relieves some pressure on the capital, the cash capital. Now, because we got to a certain number, we're trying to whittle it away to, to a certain number. And not that it's arbitrary, but the reason behind it is to sell it, which is important. But I would hate to shortchange any of these projects and have it be a situation where then we're not being responsive to what they really need to get this work done. I don't know if we could get some input as to where those reductions would come from. So that's just how I'm, where I'm at with that.
So CJ, just so I could understand what you're saying, are you looking to say under 2 million or?
2,009, or 1,009 something. So basically, that would be reducing, if we're just taking it, and I don't know what room there is, again, in the East Farms. I'm sure there's some kind of room, because we know from last year, when they're looking at a project, those aren't exact dollars. That's not exactly what's coming in. So I'm sure there's some room that could come out of that East Farms project. But I'm looking to reduce this by 198,000. I'm not saying all of that can come out of East Farms. Maybe rather than reducing this 602 by 527, we reduce it by 500 or 475 and leave something in here for some of those projects. Again, I don't know which high school projects. We'd have to look through the books. But if we leave a little bit more of this in here, then that gives them more room. It doesn't all have to come out of East Farms.
So, Madam Chair, so CJ, I just want to, so it, currently, right now, it's being proposed 2,197. Now, I heard you say take out, like potentially somehow move around the 198. So that would be 2,999?
1,999.
1,999. So you prefer a 1,99 number?
For a bonding issue, yes.
For a bonding issue?
And a 2 million bonding issue, absolutely. And what I'm saying here is we're talking about moving over from the capital budget, 527,000 into a bonding. I'm saying if you remove somewhat less than that 527, because I'm sure these projects, you can leave some in the capital budget, then we can keep that bond below 2 million and still have the funding to do these projects. At the same time, I'm saying, I'm sure within that East Farms project, a project of 1.67 million, there's some percentage that that could be reduced. So we don't necessarily have to take out the whole 198,000 and leave that in capital, but some percentage thereof.
And 93 is from last year, right, Joe? For the 1,67? We have 93, 75 or something from last year's?
Last year, right.
East Farms project. For the East Farms, you know, that's, not that that has to do with this, but that, that's subject to the, to the percentage of reimbursement too, correct? The whole thing is subject to reimbursement.
Right, yep.
So, Madam Chair, I just, I'm sorry.
I was, I was just going to say quickly, kind of where the conversation started was with the Union School Elevator, which was 437,000. We decided to go to 527,000 to move into this bond question. So if we go back to the 437,000, that gives us 97,000 reduction in that bond question, but still leaving 101,000 if we're trying to get below that 2 million. So there's 101, if, if you go back to the 430,000, there's still 101,000 to get below 2, 2 million on that bond question.
But then, I just want to remind you, then, then we're doing, what Joe talked about, we're doing just the Union Elevator and that, which he's a little less comfortable with with bond that way.
Gotcha, yep.
Yeah, so, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I appreciate CJ on what you're trying to, you know, accomplish, you know, and Edward, thank you for bringing us back to what the original thought process was, trying to get the elevator into a bonding question, which I guess, and I'm just asking for a point of clarification, because if we reduce it by 198 out of the bond question, then potentially that could be impacting what we really wanted to accomplish in terms of moving the elevator in. So it just seems like it's, we're shortchanging one item to make a number work. I, I...
I don't agree. I don't think, I think we can move in for the bonding, because again, the elevator is an estimate and a number right now. That number is a, is a good number for us to use for these purposes. I think we can still, if you moved over instead of 527, if you moved in 400, whatever it might be, 3, whatever brings me to 197, 300,000. It could be 300,000, I believe, for projects in a number of the schools. So it includes a number of the schools in these projects. And it doesn't shortchange putting that money towards the elevator. If we're sending some money to each of the schools, which I think was what Joe was looking towards, spreading an amount amongst the different schools, so it can be bonded together. Because I wouldn't be in favor of doing a separate bond, because then we're, how many bonds are we going to have on this issue? That hurts all of them.
Right. And I just really need to understa, because I'm not following you, CJ, and I apologize. So the elevator is 430, and you're talking about 300. So I know it's a estimate. And I know that when we go out for bonding, and Joe, maybe you can help, I don't want to misspeak here. When you go out for bonding, we have to go out with the full number. But once we get the quote in, or the budget in, or whatever the real price is, and we're going to take out the money that we only need. We may not take out the full money. So I, I'm just trying to follow, like, so we're not going to, if, if that 430,000 is an estimate that may be less or higher, most likely, I guess what I'm trying to hear from you, CJ, are you saying that that 430 for the, the potential elevator could be lower, and that's why we don't want to?
It could be lower, it could be higher. I think when we're, and Joe, you can clarify this. On our bond issue, when we say we're doing, let's say we're up to this 2,197 bond, how will that, will that money be listed on the bond issue? This 2.197 million will be 1.67 for renovations, 470 for an elevator. How will that be broken down on the bond question?
On the question, it will just be a lump sum.
Okay.
Question's going to say something, shall the town appropriate 2, you know, 2,197,000 for various improvements at East Farms School? It probably won't even get that specific for, for various improvements, for improvements at various schools.
So there's your answer.
That's, that's the question itself, no?
Yes.
Now, the resolution, similar to what we did last year, the resolution will list the schools and the project, projects at the school. Whether you wanted to associate the actual dollars to each project in the resolution, I would caution against doing that. But you could do that if you wanted to.
Do we normally do that?
We, we didn't do it with this, though.
I don't believe we did it last year on last year's questions, no. And I would caution against doing that, simply because it then, well, I don't, it probably doesn't matter. It actually, it probably doesn't matter. This year, we got caught up with moving money around and assigning money in June after the bond was approved. So chances are, we may have to do it again anyway. But we would, in the resolution, the body of the resolution, that first paragraph will say for, you know, office relocation at East Farms for elevator at Union School, that type of thing. It will say that.
Could you actually break it in, in half?
Break it in half?
Could you actually, what CJ's talking about, so we take only X amount of dollars to make it that number, the 1.9. And it specifically states the 430, not the fourth, not the number 430, but money with the elevator, and then leave some of it in the, in the capital? So that if the concern is, we're not going to have a, what if, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I think we...
I mean, you could...
Didn't we do that for the school roof, the high school?
Yeah. I would say you, you could basically do whatever you want in terms of how you fund this. My, my only concern in saying that, you know, I'd like to see, again, my concern isn't with the dollars. It's, it's, my concern is with the, the question itself, and how the question's going to be worded, and whether there's, there's sufficient differences. Because I'm afraid if you just go with two, two projects in one, two large projects in one question, and I don't make this determination, bond council does, based on, on legal requirements, you know, they may say, listen, you really have two separate projects here. If you just said elevator and, and East Farms relocation, they're not similar project. It's similar to saying parking lots and, and roads. So that, that's the concern, we say, no, you need two questions. So my strategy is to say, the more projects we have in here, the better it is to say, you know, we're doing improvements to various schools, and you have a broader question. So the dollar amount itself, I mean, you know, you could put whatever, you know, whatever dollar amount in there for that. Again, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to err on the side of, you know, having a larger umbrella as opposed to a smaller umbrella.
Okay. Other couple?
Couple of things here, because I'm kind of on the fence with a lot of the stuff. So on one hand, I think kind of bundling more in has its upsides. You can motivate more, you know, more school districts, more people get excited, more likely to vote yes. The counter to that is what CJ's saying, where if we get that number too high, and now it becomes not palatable, more people will also potentially vote no for it. So I think it's a little bit of a catch 22, barring all the legal questions kind of you're talking about, Joe, just from a what can the town do standpoint. Couple of questions on, because I do think, kind of from my experiences, the elevator number may be more of a hard number. I, you know, there, there's some wiggle room there, that people tend to be high. With the East Farms number, and I know I had asked Rusty, the architect, this, you know, how he came up with it, and he said there was a breakdown. And I know it's a Saturday morning, and I don't know if it's possible to get him on it. But I just am curious on what kind of wiggle room there is there, like what 100,000 out of that would mean? What, you know, is it possible to get some kind of quantitative feedback on what like 100 out of that means, or what 50 out of that means, just for purposes of our discussion?
I mean, we probably could.
And I don't know if it's, that would be valuable for us?
We can talk to the superintendent, and she could probably try to track some, some information down.
Okay. Madam Chair? Yes.
I'd like to call the question.
On?
Second.
Who had the floor? Did you recognize that?
Yes, Beth.
I'd like to poll the, I'm against calling a question. If we've just called a question second.
We didn't have a second. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I was waiting for that.
Wait, can we clarify the question now?
What's the question?
Yeah.
I think there was a motion on the table, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I think, and Paula, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was that, that the mechanical and district, district and mechanical equipment be reduced to, reduce 527,000, so that, that account now equals $75,000. I think that's what the motion was on the-
I made that motion, yes.
Yes, and Bruce made that motion.
Okay. So now I'll poll the board.
Nay.
No. Nay.
Yes.
Nay.
Aye.
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 So the question is on the floor.
No.
No. I think you need a supermajority for that, right?
To call the question. Okay, so the question is not called, then. So now we still have discussion. I'd like to know if we could get, we could, I know Kathy's here, if we could ask for that additional, if she has any idea about that additionally, before we vote on it.
Okay, Paul, just tell me, you're looking to see on the East Farms relocation, how tight that 1.8 number is, and is there any wiggle room in?
Yeah, just, I think he said he had a detailed breakout, maybe he can just email it to you even, and-
All right, let me go to, you guys continue, I'll just talk to the superintendent.
Okay. So we can continue, right?
Yeah, yeah. Should be post-
Madam Chair.
That's, that motion is on the floor. Should we just leave, can we leave it and talk about other things, or?
We have more discussion on that motion, I think.
Right, okay, yeah.
So, I'd like to continue on that motion.
Go ahead.
The, first off, what I'm suggesting isn't even, at this point, cutting dollars from the total capital for these projects. I'm talking about how we list them and how we account for them. I, I believe, if we're gonna put this bonding issue at 2.197, it will fail, and we will not be able to do the East Farms School, we will not be able to do the elevator, we will not be able to do any of those renovations, rather than having 3, 200 and whatever million dollar, or 2 million something for all these projects, we'll have 75,000 for these projects. And we will go another year without touching East Farms, without touching the elevator, if this bond fails. If we set up this bond to succeed, and we have a less than $2 million bond, which I think is much more likely to pass, in my opinion, I stated that last year, and we shift some of that money from the capital to add, to make that closer to 2 million, and we leave money in the capital budget to cover the other dollars, and we, again, we can talk to the Board of Ed, we can talk to the architects to see if there's any wiggle room in that, so that money that we leave is not exactly the 602 plus the 1.67. But all I'm proposing right now is not cutting that down to 75, because if this bond issue fails, all we have for any of these capital projects, what we put in the bonding and what we put in the district-wide mechanical is $75,000.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Well, wait, are you done? Let's-
Yes.
Madam Chair, I appreciate CJ with all your numbers that you're throwing out, so I just want to make it clear for, not only for the council and the public, so, a lot of the stuff that you're saying, I don't think we necessarily disagree. We all want something to pass and to make it happen. So let's just be clear at the council and to the community of what we're really talking about. So, when you're saying to reduce that number of a bond asked question and put it back into cash, what is that total number?
The money from the cash you're talking about? How much were you talking about shifting over?
527 over to the bond question, and you're suggesting to-
Shift over 320.
So that would be back, what is the total number?
So the five, instead of shifting over 527, shift over 320, so 620 less 320.
So what's the total number?
602.
No, no, not the bond, what's-
The capital would be 282.
282.
Yes.
So there's, so I just want to make sure, so in this scenario, in your scenario that you're proposing, and I'd just like to play it all out, so, the first scenario, if we threw everything all in based on what we, we were asking Joe about, that, you know, if we're gonna do something, he would prefer something a little bit more, and we kind of grabbed on to that, we're concerned that that high number potentially could fail at a referendum when we go through our budget. Now, we would move forward with still a higher number in the bond question, that, that also could still fail, that, because we don't know how the voters are gonna vote, and we still will not have money for an elevator for, what was that number again, 375?
I believe it's 320.
320. So, we know that the elevator is $430,000. So, so I, that's where, I appreciate everything that you're saying, I just want to make sure we put numbers on the table, so we're clear, that no matter which direction we go in, if we go in with your lower bond number, that's still a potential that could fail, and even though we move money into cash still, which they're gonna get, potentially will not be enough money for them to accomplish, which I think the elevator is extremely needed for that school.
Agreed.
So, I don't think we're looking to cut out the elevator, I think we're looking to try to make sure we get the elevator. So, I think that proposal, I could not support, because I want to make sure that we do what's right for the school, and making sure that we get that elevator. So however we do that, I hope we can come up with the right solution.
And my response would be, I think we're a much higher likelihood of getting the elevator if the bonding issue is not above 2 million.
Joe, can I ask a question about that too? If we bonded the 1.9, and, or I understand you explained how it's bonded when we go out. So the East Farms project is, goes out, it comes in at, you know, 1.5, then we get 30%. So the $2 million, or 1.9 million that we have, that we've set out, that we've bonded, or were set out in the question, appropriated, we now have dollars there that are gonna come back to us. Would that be then, can be, can that then be used for the other projects that are not, say they don't bond, they, they won't give us anything back for the elevator? Do you know what I'm saying? So we really have 1.9, and we've gotten back 400 in there, so we really have, you know what I'm, so we really have-
Yeah, this is gonna be really complicated. Let's do it in round numbers. Say you have a bond question for $2 million, and, and of that, and it's approved, and 1.6 or 1.7 million is for the East Farms, and the rest is for whatever, and if the East Farms comes in at 1.5 million, okay, let's keep, keeping out the, keeping aside the reimbursement, you originally thought the East Farms would come in at 1.6 million, it comes in at 1.5, you have a savings of $100,000. That $100,000 can go to any of the other projects-
Okay.
-within that question, okay?
So that could go to the elevator?
Right.
And that's really, Paul, where you're going, if there's money to-
The reimbursement-
Correct.
However, any reimbursement you receive cannot-
Okay.
Because basically-
Right, you don't bond more.
You appropriated the $2 million, you get, you know, you get 30% reimbursement, that comes off the $2 million, or off the top of the $2 million, so, so that comes off, and now you're, you're at a million four now, or whatever. So that's where you, you cannot apply that to the other projects, if that reduces the appropriation.
Because you-
But any savings in any other project, say, for example, just the opposite happened, say, East Farms is at 1.67 million, and it comes in at 1.8, but the elevator comes in at 2, then the savings from the $200,000 savings from the elevator could go to East Farms. So, you, within, within the appropriation, there is flexibility, but there's no flexibility with the reimbursement.
So, with that said, any of the other projects that are there, that were, you know, 27, 40,000, if they, if the 40,000 one came in at, just to reiterate, came in at 25, that 15,000 could go to the other items within that question.
Right, and just the opposite could happen.
Right, if we get it for 50, it has to come out of that, so.
Right, or it either comes out of there, or you have to appropriate additional monies for it. Again, we ran into this with the, this year with the school roofs at IAR. One portion of the school roof was higher than the other, so we combined them together, so that we had a bigger pot of money to do all, to do everything.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, Union School and IAR, combined, because it was, because it was one question, it was all incorporated in one question, we were able to take the extra money that was estimated for Union and put it into IAR, because IAR is estimated to be more expensive than Union.
So that allows you, actually, for more flexibility?
Right, by bundling, you have more flexibility, right?
Madam? Okay. Well, I'm just gonna see if Kathy has-
Oh, sorry, I have a question for Joe, based on what he was just saying, sorry. So, if you're bundling, so say we were to put out a bond question for 1.9, which then is roughly about 200, $230,000 from the MEP, we know that $230,000 does, well, we assume, based on the numbers we have, based on the additional quotes, 230,000 does not, would not cover all of these projects listed here. Can we still list all of the projects, or can we only list based on how much we think they're going to cost?
I'm not fond-
So-
I see what you're saying.
That's a good question.
So if we have, so we're, we know East Farms, we're estimating East Farms is 1.67, and we're estimating that what, that these are, we're gonna say 527, to take the high school out of the picture. MEP, if we only put in 230,000 into this bond question, can we still list these other four projects?
Oh.
Even though we know this 230,000 isn't going to cover all four projects?
As long as you don't, as long as you don't ascribe a specific dollar amount in the resolution of the bond to each project, because obviously that wouldn't work. So, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't go in there and say, you know, 1.67 million for East Farms and 435,000 for Union School, and use up the appropriation, and then list all these other projects and say we're also using, also, you know, these other projects. You would have to, at that point, you do, probably do not want to show that the individual dollar amounts for the projects. You could list all the projects with the intention that we're gonna use the $2 million for these projects, but I would not in the body of the resolution say allocate out the dollars to each individual project, and that's, that's not accurate.
So if it turns out we don't have enough funds for all of these projects, because we didn't bond enough, it's still?
Then, yeah, then you would, you would basically, you know, do the projects you want to do, and the other projects either would not, would not get done through the bond, you would, you'd be back in the situation you are now, you'd have to appropriate for them.
And then how would it work if, as part of this process today, we were to keep some portion above $75,000 in cash for MEP? Would they, I mean, are we double counting in that way, or double listing, or do they get listed as a portion of the IAR HEAT?
No, it'd be similar to what we did with the high school last year. If you recall, with the high school project, it was like $265,000 that they said they needed, and we gave them, I think it was 209 through the bond, and we gave them 55 in cash, and then eventually we gave them another 2,000 in a reappropriation. So, I mean, if, and again, if you look in your budget document, you could see the high school, where we broke it out in the different components, and I would do the same thing for this. For example, if you said, you know, let's, let's do it in reverse, let's say East Farms, or focusing on these other projects, what, what if you focus on East Farms? East Farms is 1.67 million, well suppose, in the bond, you put 1.5 million, and in the cash, you put 270,000. You could do that. You know, there's, there's nothing says you can't do that, we did it last year for the high school roof. So, in this way, you leave all the other projects in there with their dollar amount, and then you, you have a lower amount in there for East Farms. You could do that also.
So then, that would require prioritizing among us, because if the bond doesn't pass, we'd only have, then we would, we could reallocate?
You could reallocate, right.
Or reappropriate in the MEP, if needed, okay.
Well, and that's where I was going when I was asking about the 430, if we kept 200 in here. But then we identify that we are looking at each school, and if we did the, if we do the 1.9, we, I mean, we certainly, whatever happens, if it is 1.5, or it comes out to be 1.4 with East Farms, it's just a real, and we have a conversation with the board about how we're, how we deal with it. I mean, we certainly collaborate with them enough to, to make those, those decisions, and hopefully it comes in under, we're, we're good to go. But it seems as though that's been something that we've certainly done before, and we, and it works out, just like the high school roof did, so.
So, Madam Chair, so, so going back, and I want to use real numbers here, so if we take out the 198 and put it back into cash, what is that total? And I'm not asking you CJ to do it, I'm asking Joe.
What's the 198?
Well, no, not 198.
Oh, CJ's 198.
I believe if you were to bring the 1.67 up to 1.9, it would be reducing the 602 by 320 to make that 282. Joe, check me out on that.
All right, so let's, let's do it again.
Changing 602 to 282.
What's the goal here?
The goal is to-
To get below 1, to get below 2 million.
Is to put 320,000-
No, 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 what's the goal?
Take 320 out of the 602.
What's the, what's the goal of the bond?
Okay, the goal of the bond is to try to get it to 199.
And the absolute minimum to do that, I think, is taking 329, if you want to go exactly, you know, the very minimum to get below that 2 million would be 329.
320, 329, anywhere in there's fine, yeah.
Yep, yep.
320 would give us 282.
I'm, I'm lost at the 320.
Okay, I was too, but, so let's try, so we want to get, we want the total bond-
You're at 2 million 197,000.
No, no, the original, we're talking about the original bond issue, which was gonna be 1.67 for East Farms.
Right.
To bring that up to 1.99, you'd be adding 320,000.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
So we'd be reducing the 602 from 320.
You're working backwards from the rest of us.
I do that a lot.
Thank you for identifying that.
And so you're saying 602, and then you're minusing out the 320 to that?
Yes.
Okay, so-
Yep, hold on. So then we, he's gonna tell us what our reduction would be.
Yes, please.
So you want 282,000 in there.
So, that, 282,000?
That's what it would be left in there.
Thank you for pointing that out, Nancy. Oh, that would be left in the-
That would be left in cash.
In cash, okay. So if Bruce amended his motion for 75 to 190?
Wait, so, wait, let's just, let's just get the numbers, let's just get the numbers, hold on. So what you're doing now is that you're, in general, you're moving your bond to 1.999000.
Well, I just did 199.
199, okay.
Zero.
Zero.
1990.
190,000, okay, so that's what your bond is. And then you took 602, and you minus out the 320, because to do that, and you're gonna have 282,000 left in cash. So, again, we're not making our motions now, but Bruce's old motion was to take district-wide mechanical, to 527 to 75,000. Now you're saying to take district-wide mechanical from 602 to 282. I think that's what we've said.
Correct, and-
So, again, that's, that's what you want to do, but the question is, is, you know, you have to amend motion.
I have to amend my motion.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna go ahead and do, I'm gonna try my best to make sure I get the right numbers, because there's too many numbers floating around in words. I amend my motion of, do I have to say the old one, or no?
No.
Paula, okay, I'm amending my motion to move out the 282 of the district-wide mechanical equipment.
No.
No, no.
Three, oh, I'm sorry, 320. 320, sorry. 320, where district-wide mechanicals will be 282, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
Second?
Okay, now, Patty, you had a question?
Yes, I want to clarify what our intent is on the full bond amount, because I think all of those numbers were based on a bond amount of 1.99, and then I heard CJ say 1.90.
No, 190.
Okay, thank you.
1990.
Okay. Other questions right now? And did we get any information, Kathy, on that?
She's trying to contact the architect.
Okay, okay.
So this is just on the amended.
This is just on this, we're not even voting on a bond yet, but this is, that's the intention. We all understand that. But this motion now is on the district-wide mechanical equipment for the Board of Education in 282.
282, yes.
Okay, we have a motion in this, yes?
I have another comment. I'm concerned about voting yes on this motion if there's a chance that the bonding motion would change, bonding would change based on information that we're still waiting for. Because my, if I vote yes on this, it's with the absolute understanding that the bonding motion is for 1.99. And my understanding is also if we vote yes and then something happens with that bonding and we get more information, that potentially changes the bonding amount. We can't revisit this motion.
Oh, we could revisit the motion.
We'd have to have a super majority, I think, to reopen it.
I don't think, what's the question?
Can we take it?
Just, I'll, if there is a need to revisit this that I don't foresee, I will vote along with you to revisit this if anything happens to the bond.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a comfort level then that we, if, if something changes, we will revisit this?
If you have to vote, you can.
We all agree.
Right, but we're just, the process is, that's how we're, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, so we have a motion on the floor and it has to do with the 282 replacing the 602 to make it quick and short.
We have a second?
Are the, a second?
Yes, I did, I made a second, yep.
Okay, to the change.
Okay.
Okay, so first we move on the amendment. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, now the main motion. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Could we repeat the main motion?
Do we have to?
Paula, do we, where are we?
The main motion is to reduce district-wide mechanical equipment by 320,000.
Okay, everyone in favor say.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That was the amendment, that was the amended.
And then we vote on the main motion with the amendment?
The amendment now becomes the main motion.
Okay.
Got it, okay, so now we can.
Now we're voting that it is going to be 282, correct Paula?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay.
All right, so can we just do a summary?
Yes, that's just what I was going to ask Joe for.
Okay, so my understanding, what we've done is on Board of Education, our district-wide mechanical engineering, that 602 is now 282. On Police Department, that communication upgrades is now from 135 is now 35. And that Stonehouse renovation, which was 100,000, was now 75,000. And then Joe can do a total of what that equals.
That's what we want to see up there.
You want it on the board?
Yes, please.
Okay. You want it on the tax and budget worksheet?
Yeah.
Yes.
No, more than that, because we also.
Give Joe a minute.
Are you counting 100 and 25, I thought? Counting the 100 here?
Rusty Malik got back to us?
Oh.
$50,000.
You took 100 out, didn't you?
Okay.
That's what he said, the leeway. Paul, Paul, did you hear that?
Sorry, no.
Rusty Malik said $50,000, that's what the leeway is in the number.
That's what the wiggle room is?
Is that in either direction, right?
No, that's, that's probably his.
I asked him about the reduction that way.
How much is he comfortable going down?
Well, that, what does he think at this point?
He said 50,000, if it's 75, it would be very, very tight. He's, the contingency is about the hazmat and the site work. So those are, he said 50, but 70 would be really.
So he would, it sounds like he would still have contingency even without 50.
Yeah, I think so, but it's still.
Oh, yeah, right.
He still has the contingency. Yeah, obviously, that's, yeah, that's just.
Good.
That's good.
So at this point, you've done nothing to the board operating budget, nothing to the town operating budget, nothing to debt service. Capital improvements you've reduced by.
445,000?
445,000 dollars in capital, capital improvement reductions. And you've added 40,000. So now your budget stands at 111,779,627, a 5.2% increase. And you're at a 3.42% tax increase.
Going in the right direction. Okay, other questions about capital?
Joe, can you say that one more time?
Sure. Again, education has not changed, the town has not changed, debt service has not changed, capital improvements have been reduced. They're now 3,388,000. Parsons is still there at 700,000. We've added 40,000 for BOE non-certified staff. The bottom line right now is 111,779,627, which gives you a tax rate of 28.11 mils, a 0.93 increase or a 3.42%.
Thank you. Okay, other conversation, and it doesn't mean we can't go back to capital. You know, everybody, it's just, listen to us, yes?
I guess, so while we're all here, I mean, with that new information, would we be okay with scaling back, I guess, the cash part of that, $50,000?
I'm not.
Okay.
You wouldn't want to reduce the bond?
You would rather reduce the bond?
Well, 50,000 is a reduction or a variance in the elevator.
No, that's for.
Oh, East Farm, sorry, but that's in the bond, so.
But either way, if they're being bundled, I guess the way I look at it is if East Farms is taking, it's all a matter of how it gets allocated after the fact anyways, but if we can identify 50 that we don't need there, could we just, I guess, yeah, I mean, either out of the bond or, to me, it would make more sense leaving in the bond and just taking it out of the cash. Just as a way to kind of keep moving along and getting our CIP number down to a bottom line that I can get to.
Well.
So I guess Patty, you said you're not a fan, but I don't, I'm curious what other people think.
Well, I mean, with the information that 50,000 on a $1,670,000 project can be reduced, I'd say we reduce to 50,000. That obviously won't have any material effect. If he was as specific to say, I could reduce by 50 but not by 75, I'm pretty comfortable reducing that. You know, reducing it from either the capital or the bonding. Again, I say that I'm good with a 1.99 bonding, but I don't mind having less future debt either. So I could reduce to 50 either way. I think, you know, reducing the 50 seems logical now in light of the response we just got.
I would, if, if we were going to reduce it at all, I'd reduce it from the capital budget itself. I don't feel comfortable, I'm, I'm happy with the 1.99, but because of the flux of the other, like the elevator, I'm not sure what the, what the other dollars might be. So I'd be more comfortable taking it off of here than I would be, than I would be on bond. I think there are some other things that are possible in, within our, within this right now too, but, but we can first go to this issue.
And, you know, I agree, I think holistically, a lot of this for me depends on what we did with operating because if, if we hypothetically left operating 100% alone, I would, would, there's more that I would have to take out of CIP to get there. If, if there's flexibility there, then I have more flexibility here too. But just, it's one of those things, can't have your cake and eat it too, you know, as far, as far as my number goes.
So, just because we're on this topic, so I would prefer if, if we could, and, and obviously it's, we all got to get everyone's opinion. Let's table that as we go through the other items and if we need to go back.
Okay.
We can go back to this, about 50K out of that category.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would, I'm curious if it's possible to find out how confident the board is on the $430,000 for the elevator and whether it could potentially be higher than that?
I can find out. Okay, while we're doing that, in looking at the board's capital budget, I'd like to talk about something and it's under, it's 325 and it's the structural architectural. And specifically, the number in there is 300,000 for the floors, for the West District floors. And when I looked through the projects that we're doing, we're doing a lot of work with West District right now, this money won't even be used this year. It's not going to be, it's the floors for net, right now, they're going to be doing the conversation, they're going to be doing the gym floor, they're going to be moving the offices. And so there's $300 sitting here to be banked. And I think that's a place we could go and take 300 out of that, leave the 25, but take the money for the flooring out and wait till next year.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Flooring, the flooring represents how much out of that?
300,000.
And the request was 325?
Yeah, so 25 is, I wouldn't do that, you know, I just, but this is a specific for the West District flooring that it has, as I said, would be banked. And I had asked about that and that was, it is going to be banked. And they, and they're doing all these other things for West District this year to get the security. We're doing all that, you know, the moving of the office, redoing the floor in the gym. And I think the cafeteria area, I mean, that all is, is an area that's, the office and the, you know, if you go into West District, you know, there, there has to be a vestibule there now for security and also. All that's going to be, that's in the process of what we did last year on the bonding issues. So I'd like to, to think about that, that's a big chunk. And it's not that we're not doing anything for West District, we're absolutely doing a ton of stuff right now, so, yes.
I would, I'm, I'm open to it and be in favor of that just in an effort to have our CIP again get to a number, looking at that bottom line and moving in, in the right direction, so. I, I agree with what you said.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I heard you. All right, for, did, I, I heard as well that it was $300,000 in banking. Did we know, get any information on how much total that project was expected to cost?
I don't, yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
We'd have to find that out again. I just know it was 300,000 for the West District flooring and the 25 was for.
Do they?
No Wallace and IAR.
Do they have it in their book?
I looked, I could find it.
Okay.
It was lumped.
You mean going out a couple of years?
Yeah.
It was lumped with other projects.
Yeah.
So Madam Chair, your suggestion is to have us consider right now is 100%, so it would be a deferral of 100% of that project.
Yeah, well, it would be removing it from this line.
Because I had looked at that as well and the fact that it's a project that's longer term, if we could defer that more, but I was more thinking of a banking concept where maybe we reduce it by half so that next year they're not coming back for that full amount, but less. So I'm certainly open to looking at reductions there.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just as far as this discussion, we have, and I appreciate the point of, you know, do we bank or not bank on some of these issues that are larger items? We have some larger items we're paying for this year. We clearly bonded a number of large items last year, so as we all agreed, we had caught up on facilities. The board did explain to us when they were going through their process that they were bringing some things forward because of how much we got done last year. So I would be comfortable with taking out the full 300, knowing that we're doing something like the 400 and something elevator and we're getting some very big items done throughout the school system. And as a result, I'd be comfortable with taking the 300 off of this and calling that a 25,000.
Other thoughts?
So I'm just looking, I was just looking because we were wondering what it would cost and, and I don't know if this is really giving us the right answer. I mean, their book is basically telling us that they're planning on doing some additional work in that category, which I don't believe that that's for the floor in total, so.
I think those are placeholders every year.
Right.
Is it something you guys are still interested in finding out with the entire West District flooring project?
Uh huh, yes.
Yes.
So an idea of what portion this is that we'd be deferring?
Can you text her and let her know she's up there? Okay, I just think that we are doing a number of things for the school, for West District and just for the schools. I like the idea of being able to bundle, to do the. Well, we're working, we're chipping away at the prior report, but we're all, and we're also doing things that we need to do at all the schools by, by bundling and bonding, which is great.
Right.
And receptive to that, so this, I just feel, we can't do everything, so we've got to give and take somewhere.
Just, just one other point from the capital. I believe we had taken off 125 thus far from the town side. We really, although we've reduced our capital here by 320 on the school side, we have not reduced a single dollar from the school's capital request thus far because we've just shifted it from capital to bonding. So this would be reducing the school's capital request by 300,000 for something that they do not propose doing this year. And it would be banking dollars that were shifted to next year. So that's again, why I'd be very comfortable with that.
Yep, and, and Madam Chair, I think before I make my decision, I, I just would like to know the answer once Erica gets it. 350,000?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so.
And also, I just want to add to Bruce, to the point of doing things this year, we've pushed up the East Farms pieces, which I, I think is a great plan to be able to, to couple all of those East Farms pieces together to go out for the bond. Those aren't all, they aren't all in this year as far as the, the board's plan, but that's okay because it's, it's, we put this together to take care of it rather than going into it piecemeal. And I think that's, that's part of the beauty of us working together to do these things. And, but with that said, it goes along the same line that was just said that we were doing more this year there than we thought we'd do. So I think pushing this out a year certainly isn't, isn't harmful.
So, Madam Chair, with the additional information that I heard, knowing that the school is really not planning on doing this work in this fiscal year and it's really, it's 350,000 for the full project. They were planning on banking 300,000, so this way, when they had the additional 50, I would entertain, you know, taking this out, knowing that it will come back next year for the ask as a planning document.
Just, I just heard you say that, to talk to the superintendent, that's, that's a banking account. And so they obviously, they were not planning on starting the project or doing anything until they got the next 50,000 next year. She's completely comfortable with breaking that out into, you know, two different numbers. We didn't talk about not having it at all, but doing, you know, 150 one year and then some more than 50,000 in the next year with the understanding of that's how we do it. And so that's what she just said.
Well, part of our discussion was just that the fact that we are bringing East Farms dollars into this year when it was out a few years, we're paying, you know, we're, we're happy to do that at this point. I mean, I'm happy to do that, but bringing that all together is fine and taking the 300 out to the next, you know, to move that out is not a bad thing because we're doing more for the schools and also that we haven't, well, I'll leave it at that for me.
And, and based, based on where I'm coming from, essentially because we, we move things forward, we're just moving one thing back, knowing that they're not doing it this year anyway. So it's, we're not saying, or I'm not saying no. I'm just saying that we're just, because we moved something up forward, just one thing may be pushed back to another year, that's, that's how I'm looking at it.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we remove 300,000 from the structural architectural line item and make that 325,000.
Second.
Make it 25.
No, I'm sorry, 25,000.
CJ! You're driving me crazy!
Okay, other discussion.
I have a question and I've been told by others, colleagues, that this is not the case, but I just want to be clear. The flooring project at West District, and just as far as timing, does it have anything to do with some of the other things that are going on with office move? And there's some other things, so I'm just wondering if they're trying to line it up?
The only information I got from the superintendent was that she was not planning on doing this project until they got the 50,000 the following year. So that's when, so it wouldn't be done until that time.
And the other projects are going to be, are done now? Are done now?
By the, yeah.
By the end of this year.
The other ones that we've bonded are being done now.
I think so, yes.
Okay. That would be my only concern, that if it was something that was.
I don't, that's not my understanding of what, what she just said.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. 300, Joe. So does that?
Where does that bring us?
What does that, where does that bring us?
He's doing it.
Okay.
Okay, so now your capital is at 3 million, 88,000. It's a 569,000 increase, 22.59%. And so your overall budget is now, still 111 million, 479, 627, 5.2 million dollar increase, or 4.88%. And your tax increase now is at 3.11%, 0.85 mils, 3.11%.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I would like to make another motion to, on the Board of Education's capital side, the technical, technology, reducing it by 50,000 to 450,000. Second.
Discussion. Go ahead, Bob.
Is, if we, we can always come back to this, depending on how things go later and adjust this as necessary, so this wouldn't be final. Okay, that's all.
So I just have a comment about that, and when I first looked at this, I thought that, that could very well be an area to go. I'm just concerned now that, I wasn't anticipating the elimination of the whole 300,000 for the West District flooring, and I'm wondering if we could, maybe what, where you were getting at, is we can just maybe postpone that discussion and making a cut there and, and look at, we have a lot on the town side that we haven't touched yet and just kind of change the order that we're discussing that, postponing that.
Other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor? And all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, so 50,000 from the technology.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I think Kathy, this is in your item.
Okay.
The engineering department. The school parking lot paving and upgrades, you have 200,000 there, is there any room there if we took something out there?
That, that's 100% the banking item, so we're sa, we're just saving money to eventually do the parking lot, so yes, but it'll just take longer to save the money.
Correct, so if.
This is for Union School? Is it specific? Or is it town?
Four schools?
This is, I think the first one that's scheduled to be on the docket, if I remember, is Union School, but that could move, but that's what we're, that's what we're aiming for to do first.
So if I make a recommendation to remove 50,000 from it, you know, that just means that we have to build up another 50,000.
Yes.
Longer out.
Right.
Yep.
So Madam Chair.
Is there anything in that now? I should have waited.
No, no, that's a new account.
There's nothing in it now?
No, that's a new account.
So, Madam Chair, I make a motion to reduce the school parking lot paving upgrade from 200,000 to 50,000, from 200 down to 150,000. Second.
Any discussion? I guess I just have a concern that as we, I know this is banking, but I'm concerned about the parking lots too, so I don't. It just takes us longer, that's all.
Madam Chair, my recollection from, from our discussion is that each parking lot is 400 to 500,000. So this is a, while a 50,000 reduction would take us longer, it may, I don't know how much longer it will really take, because next year we would still need to fund a significant portion in order to start Union Schools parking lot, so I'm fine with reducing by 50,000.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Next.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Town hall improvements, that's another banking account that's been a regular request, I think at a fairly stable level from year to year.
Yeah, I mean, that's truly a, whatever you give us, we'll, we try to, we were just recently saving the majority of that to do the parking lot, as you can see outside. The new, the new item is, the big item is the security in the town hall building. That's what most of this money is going to be starting to be banked or used for. We have a security consultant to help us with improving the security of the building.
So it's not at the point yet where you're looking at cost for a specific project? You need to go through the consultant for?
I will get there probably in the next couple of months, so whatever funding we have next year, we'll, you know, be able to start that process. There won't be that much left over from the paving project.
Yes.
And how much is currently banked in the account? I don't think we made a motion yet.
No, 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 I just wanted to talk about it.
Is there a question asking if there's banking?
Yeah, yeah, we're just.
Just looking at your spreadsheet, I don't think there is, but.
I think, you know, we, we just did a bid for over 300,000, I believe, just in the last month, so there's, I'm not sure how up to date your number is, Joe.
After the parking lot is done, there probably would be about 125,000 left, approximately.
Approximately, is that?
Yeah, it's, you know, around it.
So, Madam Chair, so Kathy, knowing that additional information based on, on Beth's question, would you recommend any reduction?
I mean, if you wanted to make a slight reduction in it, I think we could look with that, we just do less, like I'm talking like 50,000 or something along those lines. More than that, I'd start to get nervous and I'd rather look at some other accounts because I think it is crucial about the security of this town building.
Absolutely, I'm all about security.
Yeah.
That's why I want to make sure that whatever, if anything were done, how are you feeling?
CJ.
Well, you just touched on it in part, so this money would be going towards security and would it also be going towards ADA compliance?
Yes.
Yeah. Again, we, yeah, we have a security coming in, we'd be banking the money for all those types of things, what Erica described, there's a whole new plan for the ADA, for security, so again, recently what we've been doing is just banking our money for the parking lot, and now that that's done, now we're going to start banking money again and we're going to kind of do some for security, some for ADA, whatever the priorities are.
Yeah, I know this isn't a group that wants to cut back on any security or ADA, but it's a matter of how we do the banking and if that's.
Correct.
If you're comfortable with 25 or 50 or whatever.
I'd like to make a motion, I move to reduce the town hall improvements line item from 200,000 to 150,000.
Second.
Discussion. Would you be doing things this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this year 20 for sure.
Yes.
So you'd be, you're getting the plan back now and then you'd be starting, and this includes, again, ADA compliance, security. Do you expect that, well, it's an ongoing, ongoing funding, I would say, every year you're trying to do something, but now is the parking lot, will that be totally done?
Yeah.
Yeah, by, by the latest fall.
But I mean, with the money you have, it'll, the parking lot will be totally done, so now it's totally into the Board of Ed, I mean, into the building itself.
Yeah.
I just, I just have a concern of.
I mean, I think, I think that one of the things that could possibly happen, you know, I think we can, like I said, we just do less, I think 50,000 or 25 would be okay. I just think that we do, once we get into the whole security aspect and the report comes back and some of the things, you may see a larger number next year because what the report has come up with, and we may not be as, we may be saying that that's really a top priority, that we have to get some stuff, because there is quite a few things in this building that we need to do for the security, so.
We put it off all the time.
Yeah, and that, there's, you know, there's a whole new philosophy of municipal buildings and how you handle the security of it and different things like that. So again, I think that we're getting the consulting report back, we're going to start doing things, but I will say that depending on what comes back, you may see a much larger number coming in next year and splitting it out for the town hall security, because it's definitely going to be bumped to a top priority for employees and the public and things like that, and, you know, in this thing, so just to be clear about that.
Well, it involves the town and the Board of Education.
Right.
It's not just the town here.
Right, no, absolutely. I'm working with the board on some things.
Okay. Other discussion?
So I just want to reiterate where I'm coming from, so the, this is an account where we're bringing forward probably about 100,000. We're waiting on a report, so next year, we'd be making, the council would be making a decision with some more concrete information about a plan and really looking at what is it going to take to fund a security project and be looking at design or plans and more specifics, so I just think it's.
That's accurate, absolutely. Other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, where are we, Joe?
Oh, we can see where we are.
Yeah.
I like seeing you.
I know.
Okay, so now your capital budget's been reduced, you're now at 2,938, to 1,938,000, a 419 dollar increase, 16.63%. Your overall increase is now 4.74% and your tax rate is now 2.96, a 2.96% increase.
And Nancy, could we ask after you look at that, that we take a five minute break?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, we're back. Oh, go ahead.
I move to reduce classroom furniture from 150,000 to 100,000.
Second.
Discussion.
Can I just, clarification on what classroom furniture and where this is and the, the timing wise? Was this something we had pushed forward or is this something that's scheduled? Whoever wants to answer.
What?
The amount that's in there is for all first grades to get new furniture, so a reduction in that would mean that some first grades wouldn't get new furniture, and so it would be from 150, you said, to 100?
Yes.
Maybe just figure that out.
Kathy?
Other comments?
Oh, CJ.
Oh, go ahead.
My recollection is that the board did make a request for classroom furniture last year. I know we did not fund it, so this is, I'm, I'm inclined to fund it in the full amount this year.
Other comments, Everett?
Yeah, I'd say, I know we had this intercapital, we were looking at this for capital budget last year and it was one of the items, you know, certainly it's, it's needed and we, and we had pushed it off, but since we pushed it off last year, I'd, I'd prefer to look elsewhere for some savings in the capital, so I'd prefer to keep this hole this year, especially since the superintendent just said that the 150 would be for all the first grade classroom furnitures, so I think it makes sense, if we're going to do it, to do all the first grade classroom furnitures rather than do 80% or whatever, a certain, you know, a certain percentage of them get new furniture and the, and the other classrooms are still with the old furniture. I, I think I'd rather just see us do it all at once and maybe look for some savings elsewhere in the CIP.
Just a question, any thoughts on where those other places might be?
I think I'd like to ask Kathy Egan if she has any recommendations in terms of, like, priority, like where would you be comfortable, Kathy, in additional reductions that we have not already discussed, that we have not already approved with a motion?
What dollar amount are you looking at?
For me, I would be looking at maybe around 60,000 or so.
Could I, could I interject just quickly for a minute? And before we go to Kathy Egan, just ask Kathy, if you don't mind, is there somewhere else in, within your capital that you'd feel more comfortable, you know, for 50, let's say? Maybe the cafeteria equipment or technology?
So the cafeteria was more banking?
Oh.
The 25,000 for cafeteria equipment was banking, so it's not something, you know, we're trying to build up an account, so when something does happen, we're able to address it in real time and not have to do, you know, repairs or an emergency purchase, so, you know, with that, I would say that that reduction would come before classroom furniture.
Okay. Well, we like to ask Kathy Egan, so you're here, so I figured we'd.
Again, I would probably, because most, I would look to, look at the banking items, because just as Kathy Greeters just said, I'd probably go back to the school parking lots because it's a brand new, you know, initiative, I'd probably look at that. Would be my first thing, I would hate to give up a piece of equipment and things like that. Town hall improvements, again, is a banking account, I'd maybe split it between the two of them, the school parking lots and the town hall improvements. I really, wouldn't really do.
Madam Chair.
Or, and again, the stonehouse renovations.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Kathy, I just, just want to make sure I'm understanding, when you say that you may entertain looking at the school parking lot, is that an addition of what we already did?
Yeah, yeah, and I guess the other one would be the youth center renovations, that would be to hire an architect to start doing those things, that would probably be something, again, it'd be a new, new project, but I think that we're getting in a situation now where, you know, you're, you're cutting the, the capital budget down, that, you know, it's deferred maintenance on just the accounts and on the infrastructure, so, but it would either be the banking or the accounts, the youth center renovations, we wouldn't hire the architect and we wouldn't do any renovations until the following year.
Sure.
Yes.
I'll withdraw that motion for the time being.
Okay.
Second.
Other possibilities, conversation?
Madam Chair. Kathy, you have an item for fleet vehicles at 50,000, that's for two vehicles.
Yep.
Are those vehicles that you feel like you absolutely need to replenish or put in for this year or?
Again, it's, let me just find where we are, which, which one are we talking?
It's. In the narrative.
Yeah, no, I mean, again, it's, it's just, it's taking vehicles offline and putting them into the other line, so again, can they wait another year? They probably could, sure, you know, it's, again, they're, they're fleet, fleet vehicles It's, again, they're, they're fleet, fleet vehicles that would go, replace these two and then the two would go down into the fleet. Again, we are having an issue with our fleet vehicles. Like I said, that's one of the reasons that, you know, we use the old police cars and the different things that we've done and the, the old police cars. So in general, throughout this whole account, the fleet vehicles are one of the things that is important to us. If you, again, asked for a priority, that wouldn't be the one I would take, but in the end, you know, we would make do, you know?
No, I want to, I would like to, you know, hear from you.
Yeah.
Just a thought, we've been almost three hours on the capital. I'd be interested in getting in some of the operating budgets to see if there's anything else that I'd feel we need to remove from the overall budget, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, I think, I was just going to suggest that. We've been, we can look in the others. We want to see, there are a couple of things Kathy Egan talked about before, see where we're going with that, and then we can come back to this if we feel that's where we need to go. Kathy Egan?
We did, and I emailed it to you. If you need a copy, let me know. We, we did talk about throughout the process, the other night, there was one, two, three, four, five items that I just highlighted that if we were going to talk about eliminated items on my 2.5 percent increase. One of them was the newsletters in Town Council Office Supplies for $15,000. One was a community brochure, community and recreation brochure for $6,450. The Town Council Consultant, that was $10,000, and that was for the Farmington Village, with the understanding that last year we did use the contingency money out of that to pay for the consultant. But, again, I think there's a lot going on with the Parsons and that leaves no contingency money, but, so that, you know, I don't know if we need the full 10,000, but I think there's a lot going to go on with the Parsons property. Sheros, I think, is the correct term, right? Sheros?
Correct.
I was calling them shereks before. Sheros at $5,000. And then the speed sign for traffic control. If you were going to ask me what my priorities were for these, for these items, I would say that the newsletters, the three newsletters, I think we've definitely had strong information from our survey that people do the newsletters. So I think that would be, that would be a top one. I think that we get a tremendous amount of quality-of-life type of issues with the speed sign for traffic control. People really like that sign and we don't have, I think, what did Paul say? We had two of them, I think, now? And so that would be the additional one. And I think that the sheros for the bike is a priority too, if you're going to put it in, just because that's part of our goals and objectives. And one of the things is in the goals and objectives is to get sheros on the street, I think. So I would put that on the top. And the other two, I think, still are important, as I said, but those two would be, I think, probably the Town Council Consultant would be next, and then the Community Rec Brochure. Again, a communication tool, but if we're doing the newsletters on the other side, that may not be as necessary to use the Community and Rec, an additional one on that side. But I do think that that newsletter is, that Nancy and her group does, it's Parks and Rec and Community, is very well received and people like that too. So, again, ideally, all of it, but that would be my priority list.
But that's additional, right?
Yes.
Nancy, it's, she does the ones she does now?
Yeah.
So those would still go out?
It wasn't a cut, it was an additional, yeah.
Wouldn't cut anything? Okay.
Madam Chair. Kathy, good segue when you were talking about communication. So I think, I think it was Nancy that requested $20,000 for communicate, I think it was Nancy for the park and rec, 20,000, which was taken out. Part-time?
Yep.
Could we, because that's not on your priority, but I'm just, because I think communication is very important. I, I think getting out there and really making sure that we're educating not only our community, but, you know, us up here on the council. So would it be possible if we did put that in as well? And could we lump it in the Town Council account? And, I don't, I don't know if that's possible, so I'm just asking the question. So that 10,000 would be 30,000, because I think she originally asked for 20. And that, we can have a shared communication person for, for the, for us as well as the park and recs?
Right. One of the things that we did talk about is that if we were going to do that, I wouldn't put it in Community and Rec. It would be an overall town community.
Correct, that's, yes.
Yeah, that, and that. Again, I have not vetted that, like how much time that would get for us or any of that, but that would be something, if you wanted to, we could get started and start looking at what would be the best way to do it.
Sure.
And, you know, communication, because one of the big things, as I know I wasn't at the meeting that Kat and Erica were talking about, is a communication, again, on keeping up some of our webpages, making, doing an additional newsletter, and doing some of those different things, I think would be of value to the council and to my office too.
Sure.
So, but I just want to be clear that it wouldn't be a, a Community and Rec person. It would be a person under me.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes.
So for now, I, I mean, I would like to just table that, because I would like to go into your priorities. And I would like to recommend a motion, if I may, Madam Chair. I would like to move for the newsletter back into the town's operating of $15,000. Second?
Discussion.
It's the Town Council Office Supplies.
Page 10.
On page 10.
I'll give the page numbers next time.
Any other, yes.
Yeah, I think it's kind of already been mentioned a few times, but, you know, it came out of the survey committee and I think it's very important that, you know, that is, was the number-one way that people are receiving their information. And we have, you know, this big school project coming up and we want to make sure that communication is a priority and that people are getting all the information they need. So I would, I would definitely support that.
Other comments?
Madam Chair, I'm in support of that, based on the community survey and people read the town newsletters.
Any other comments?
Just.
Oh, CJ.
Motion, I think the town's operating budget came in exactly at that 2.5 percent. We're talking about 41,450 for these five items here. I would offer the consideration of adding these five items in, not just the one item. And we'd probably do that in one motion. Sure. I'll amend my.
Wait, Joe's shaking his head.
Let's do them one at a time.
One at a time. Never mind. So, can we finish this motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, CJ. That would have made it quicker.
Yeah, I lost the bet, so we're here forever.
That's okay. Okay. Did you have something else to say?
No.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes. And delightfully, we saw that the newsletter was read by everyone, so that's wonderful.
We're thrilled.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Okay. I would like to move, and I think it's your priority number two, the speed sign for traffic control on page 32 of $5,000 back into the town's operating budget. Second?
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Go.
I would like to move the sheros, if I said it right, for the bikes. It's on page 50, $5,000 in the town's operating budget. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Okay, I would like to move in the Town Council operating budget on page 10, I'm going to recommend $30,000. That would include the additional part-time communication resource. Second?
Okay, Kathy, is that amount, I mean, we talked about a couple of different things with that. Is that something, is 30,000 really what you're looking at or they've coupled a couple things, I mean? If you're beginning this program, is this, is that much?
Yeah, I think, I think we did some research about what the school system has been paying for their part-time person. So I think it's about 15 hours a week or so. So I think this number would be about, for about 15 hours a week. Again, I haven't vetted everything yet, so, but I think that would, 20,000 would be enough to do that, to get us started on something.
Right.
Okay, so 20, not 30?
Well, Bruce said about the 10 for the, I counted the 10 still to do Farmington Village or to do stuff for that.
Right. Okay, but that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're lumping it together.
Okay, but.
So could we clarify, though, that it would be maybe 20 for part-time?
Yes, that's what we did.
Okay, and 10 for consulting?
Yes.
Yes.
You'll have to clarify, make sure you're.
So I have a question about that.
Go ahead.
Would you hire this person at, you know, with your fund of about 20,000 to help with communication town, across the town?
Yes.
Would you do that on a consulting basis or would you do it as a part-time staff?
I, like I said, I haven't vetted it yet. So I would try to see what would be the best way to do it.
This would give you something and nothing.
Right, exactly.
To focus on. And, and I also just think it's important that Kat did that great presentation about communications and we all nod our head and agree and everyone here agrees, but that it could be a stressor on your staff. And then you're in a position where you, you can't promote things maybe the way you would like to.
Right, right. Absolutely. I think that it's important, even just doing the additional newsletters is, again, coming from our office. And I know for Kat's presentation, we talked about in the office, a lot of it is just someone doing the work. And that's why, you know, again, just keeping up the webpages, doing, getting the information out, doing the additional newsletters, some of that type of stuff, and it would be townwide to be able to do that.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay?
I move the brochures for C and R on page 55 of $6,450 back into the town's, oops, is this, yeah, the town's operating budget. Second?
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, where are we, Joe?
Sorry, cut that last number.
Oh, 6,450. 6,000, 61,000, oh, it's that one, never mind.
Don't go too fast.
I wanted them all together, so.
Okay, so you increased the town budget is now up to a 2.7 percent increase. The bottom line is 111,391,077, a 4.8 percent increase, and your tax increase is up to 3.02 percent. Oh, I'm sorry. We're up to. So the town budget's now 3 million, 30,373,104, 2.7 percent increase. And the tax increase is now 28.01 mils, 0.82 mil increase, 3.02 percent.
Okay. Okay. Any, anyone have anything new they want to talk about? And we do have Kathy Greeter here, as we know, to ask any questions of too.
Well, I guess, you know, we covered CIP. There's nothing we can do with debt service, so I'd just kind of be curious to see where everyone stands with both operating lines, the updated being 3.02 and 2.70, if I'm seeing it right. For me personally, I have some flexibility there, but just kind of want to start the conversation on those two lines. I think those are the last two lines we have to talk about as far as spending goes.
Okay, from the Board of Ed's operating, now we, on the salaries section where I think we came in, that's 1.18 percent of the total. The benefits, 1.29. So 2.37 percent's right there. So clearly, we can't bring the board down to 2.7 percent without getting into those. I wanted to look at some of the other areas and see where we might think there's some room. Equipment, I know we've got some big-ticket items in equipment. I want to see if there's any flexibility from the Board of Ed's side there. Possibly slowing down the addition of the Chromebooks. We're not adding any Boom Whackers, so we don't have to worry about that line item. So is there anything in the equipment area where we can make any reductions from the Board of Ed's side? Thinking, again, Chromebooks possibly, but is there anything else that you would recommend?
Or there might be banking, too.
On the, are we talking, we're talking about.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Operating.
Operating now, yeah, sorry.
So I think, I just have to find, on the technology, I believe, I wasn't here at that point, but 50,000 has been taken out of technology and the capital, correct? From the board?
Yes.
Okay, so that, I talked to Matt about it, just so you know, it would mean we're not rewiring Union Pool. That would be the 50,000 capital. And then, just looking for the amount in the operating, if there were any, if there's any room on technology. Can you go, okay, she's going to take me a second.
Sure.
So, 30, you would postpone on the initiative that we were talking about, not the next year, but the year after going one-to-one? So we would have to push that out. That would be a, if we did that, it would be 33,000 dollars in equipment for Chromebook.
Okay. And that's, that's currently 72?
What's that?
That's currently 72, is that right, Chromebooks? So we'd go from 72 to 33?
Well, it would be reducing it by 33.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. And, and when we're talking about 33, what, what does that 33 represent? Is that dollars or Chromebooks? I'm just curious.
Thousand.
About 32,000? Okay. Yeah, we're cutting in half the number that we're bringing in.
And just again, just for a point of clarification, even though you are picking out accounts.
I know, we can't say.
I just want to make sure that you're all clear and that for the public is all clear.
The Board of Education makes all these decisions. We're just trying to find out.
Just say that that is not where they want it to be.
Right, absolutely understood.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think the Board of Ed presented an operating budget that identifies what the schools need to do to continue to meet the vision of the graduate and to continue to meet the high expectations that our residents have. I'm not willing to entertain, or I'm not, right now, comfortable, I should say, entertaining reductions to the Board of Ed operating budget.
Other, I'd like to know, Joe, if we went under 3, what would, let's say it's a 2.9, what would it be? What would the reduction be?
You went to the, reduced the Board of Ed to 2.9?
Yep.
$16,000.
16,000, brings it to 2.9. What about 2.8? You knew I was going to ask that question.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be.
I don't think that's right, Joe.
Joe, I don't think that's right.
I had more like 77,000.
I think the 2.75 is like 177,000. That was brought up the other day. But I didn't go to the 2.8 or 2.9 to see.
Just while he's doing that, Madam Chair. I think the amount we talked about the other day was to bring her, to, to bring the superintendent's budget to the target of 2.75?
No, the target was 2.5. Our target was 2.5.
2.5, right.
Right.
But you had mentioned that there was an amount discussed about 2.75.
We didn't discuss it. It was just brought up.
Oh.
That if a principal wasn't at. We didn't discuss it. It was just brought up that if a principal wasn't at the high school, it would be 175, 177, I think, and bring it to 2.75. That's the only reason I know that number. I'm not advocating that.
Okay, yeah, I would want to check that number if it came from the public.
77,511?
That's a 2.9.
It's a 2.9?
It's a lot of pressure draw, you know.
No, I'm just, I guess I'm having a little problem here. Okay, yeah, 2.9 is 77,500.
To get it down to 2.95?
2.9.
2.9.
2.90.
2.9 is 77,000.
510.
Could we see the reduction on that and what the result is on the net town side? The whole budget, excuse me. If you take another 77,511 off, the tax part.
Okay, so Board of Ed budget would then be 67,708,099, 1,908,000 increase, 2.9%. And it brings you to a tax increase of 2.95%.
So the tax increase previously was 3.02, now it's 2.95?
Right.
So I guess my question to the council is, do we think out of the 67,785,605,000 Board of Education budget, we could feel comfortable reducing that by 77,511, which would be under the 3% mark for the Board of Education's increase and would also be a tax increase of below 3%, 2.95?
Madam Chair, I would like to call a break, please.
Okay. Okay, we're back?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, just for the sake of completeness, I'd just like to see if Joe can... I think the last number he put up on the spreadsheet was a 2.9. Just want to show what it would look like as a 2.8. Not necessarily saying that's where we or I would like to go, just want to see it and from a frame of reference and just terms of seeing where that is as a talking point, starting with that.
You want to see where the Board of Ed would be at a 2.8?
Correct. What, just really what that does to the bottom, bottom-line number.
So the Board of Ed number would then become 67,642,294. It's 2.8% increase, 1.8 million dollars. The bottom line is a 2.88% tax increase.
Can I see the top again, Joe, please? So this is...
Madam Chair.
7.9. Yes?
I would like to postpone this motion.
Second?
You didn't make one.
I didn't make one.
There was a motion on the table?
I thought there was a motion on the table from CJ.
Oh, there's no motion.
What was my motion on the table? I can't remember now, it was a long time ago.
Is there a motion on the table?
No.
No.
CJ, do you want to make one?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I can make one, that's fine. I'd make a motion to set a budget with a tax increase rate at 0.295. What was that number we had?
You can't...
Can we go backwards or not? It was, it was the Board of Ed being at 2.9% increase.
Okay, you could do that.
There you go.
You can't make a motion to do the tax rate.
Go ahead. 2.9% Board of Education increase, which would result in...
Is that what you're looking for?
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay, see, your motions today would basically be to propose a budget on the expenditure side, and so basically your motions today would be to put the Board of Ed at 67.708, the town at 30.373, and so on.
Well said. That's my motion.
Okay, so that's...
It was on the board as we see it. I can read it off. The Board of Education, 67,789,400. The town, 30,373,104. Debt service, 92,98,362. Capital, 2,938. Parsons purchase, 700,000. 40,000 BOE defined contribution, 256 for teachers' retirement. For a total of 111,313,566.
Second.
Okay, for discussion.
Madam, I propose to postpone this motion.
Second?
Discussion?
Yes. I'd like a little discussion on the motion first. I'd be against postponing, so.
Okay.
I would just have a question. What's the, what's the reason for postponing? Is there something else you guys want to talk about, or...
Yes. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Sorry. We... I heard Kathy Greeter say that the reduction, there was already a reduction to the capital technology of $50,000, which means that Union School would not be rewired. She also suggested that while it's the board's prerogative as to what gets reduced, that another possible reduction is to Chromebooks. My concern is that the technology may be getting, technology improvements, changes to programs may be overly impacted as compared to other options. So we were... I am considering whether we need, whether we needed to reconsider the reduction from the school's capital technology line item in order to account for the potential impact to Union School. That's additional information we did not have at the time that we made that reduction.
Questions? I would... the budget is 500,000 for the technology budget. Is there, when you go out to bid for different equipment and different pieces, whether it's the equipment that you're buying, the Chromebooks, the, you know, that's always, that's a placeholder, isn't it? And, I mean, you know somewhat, but it's somewhat of a placeholder for just...
Matt does have a presentation on this. I can look at it. I just reached out to him to say, you know, there'll be a $50,000 reduction, just so he knew, and he said he would move things around, but most likely it's going to be a Union wiring. So there's going to be, this isn't the electrical wiring, this would be more the... So that's what he said would most likely occur with a reduction of 50,000 in capital. So it would just be postponed.
Just postponed.
Until the next year.
Yep.
It would be placed in the next year.
Okay. Other conversation?
So right now, we're talking about postponing the original motion, basically. That's what's on the table.
On the table is to postpone the original motion, yes.
CJ's motion?
Yep.
Okay. Any other conversation right now? Okay, CJ?
I would be opposed to revisiting the capital budget unless we offset that with something from the operating.
Madam Chairman, offset something from the operating above and beyond what you've already...
So the bottom line of our total spending remains the same.
What is that bottom line again? Sorry.
It's the 111,313,000.
What is that for the tax increase?
2.95.
2.95.
2.95.
So what you're saying, CJ, if we took the 50,000, or put it back, so to speak, is what you're saying, and take it out, take the 50,000 out of the board budget right now, out of the dollars of the 67,708,000?
Correct.
So really just swap the dollars?
Yes. So my, if that's the way you'd like to go, I amend my motion to change the, reduce the Board of Education's an additional 50,000 and increase the capital an additional 50,000.
Madam Chair, I still would like to postpone, I don't know, postpone his motion.
How do we, how do we...
We have to just take a vote, postpone or not?
We got to call the council, right?
No, no, we have to vote on Bruce's question first, you mean?
Yeah, you have to vote on the postponing.
Unless...
Yeah.
That postpone is before an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Yes, right.
It was an original motion, he had a motion.
And I postponed it, and then we were having a discussion. Yes.
Right.
Just another comment on the amended motion to postpone the motion. Are there any other topics we'd be discussing while we postpone this, other than that 50,000? If so, I'd like to hear about them before I'd vote to postpone it.
In terms of the expenditures?
Correct. Are there other reasons for postponing my motion other than that 50,000? Are there any other discussions about the 50,000?
Beth? Well, I think if you're talking about sticking with the $50,000 reduction that we've already approved in the capital for Board of Ed, and then on top of that, I don't know how much more we reduced...
77,000.
It was 70.
So 77,5 to get to 2.9. You know, I would just, I'd be, I'm uncomfortable with that, so I'd want to look at different places we can go to preserve some of the funding on the Board of Ed operating, but maybe look at how we could further reduce expenditures.
One of the things that I'm, just came back to my mind, was the cafeteria equipment for 25,000, something to think about that I know our superintendent said that that's banking money, it's not for anything that at this moment is in dire need, and that was something she suggested would be, would be, you know, wouldn't be hurting anything at the moment that they are planning on doing. It was banking money. So that's 25, which could, of the 50, just a thought. So. Okay. Nothing else to, anything else right now? Okay, we have a motion to postpone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Can we call the board, please?
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
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 Four to three passes. So now we have...
Nothing on the floor.
Correct.
Right.
We've postponed, I'm assuming there are questions. I'm assuming there are questions from someone who just postponed a vote. We must have something else we're looking to do. If not, I'll make my motion a second time, if there's nothing else to discuss.
We would... I would like to make a motion to revisit the capital.
Okay.
Security.
Second.
What was that motion?
Well, do we need a motion?
No.
Okay, we don't need a motion to do it. What you want to do is go to the capital, so let's go to the capital. And in, so we're back to the capital. Okay.
Now, can we make a motion on this stuff?
Yeah, you can make it.
Okay. I make a motion to... Is it amendment?
No. To add.
Because we're at... Okay. Okay, so I'm making a motion to bring back the school's technology back to 500,000, so increasing it from the 450 back to 500,000.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, before we increase any capital, I'd like to see the reductions that we're going to do before that, because I will not vote for any increase in capital till I see a corresponding reduction.
Other discussion? Sorry. And I do see in the technology, the $500,000, there are classroom upgrades to some, I mean, it's all, all things that are important, but when we're looking at the budget and the dollar amount, I think, you know, I want to see where we'd go to before we just keep, we add money back. What else that, another 50,000, so, out of our capital. Okay, any other questions? Oh, I'm...
Madam Chair, I would, CJ asked about other potential reductions. I would consider reducing the cafeteria equipment to the extent, my understanding is, if, you know, something were to break, break and Board of Ed were in dire straits, they could come to the Town Council and ask for funds for that cafeteria equipment if it was needed before next year. But my understanding is that is a banking account.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Along those same lines, the cafeteria equipment account is at zero right now. I can't remember last year. So this 25,000 that we're looking at for this year, would that be to start that up again? I don't want to get into another scenario with the dishwasher or something else major that it's, you know, zeroed out and then something happens. I'm just curious.
There's nothing right now that it's, that it's, that it's targeted toward. It's, so...
My question is, the 25,000 that we're looking at...
Is to be banked.
Is to be banked.
So if something happens...
Right. But what the balance is of that account right now? Are we adding to something or we're starting fresh?
Starting fresh. The last time money was put in there was, I think, two or three years ago for the dishwasher.
Dishwasher, okay. So now we're looking to build it up again, to have a reserve or something in there for...
I don't know that we built it up before. That was...
Was that, was that a 1977 dishwasher?
Yeah.
Here, I was more curious.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And with that in mind, I do recall it was a long time getting that dishwasher.
Yes.
So I certainly am not opposed to keeping the 25,000 in the equipment so we can have money if something like that happens again, short of all of us going in and helping wash the dishes. I will bring up again, I brought it up earlier, the classroom furniture. I know the 150 covers all of the first grade classes. How would that work out if we only had 100,000 in that line item? How much of the first grade classes could we cover?
Approximately, I can say five classrooms.
Okay.
I think we had said it was 15.
I'm not sure how many classrooms originally, so. We get 2/3 of it? Okay.
Then it would be postponed. It's not gone, it's postponed. Okay. Okay. Other questions?
Well, I'd just be curious if people are amenable to reducing classroom furnitures this year to 100,000 and getting two thirds of the first grades re-outfitted, that would offset the 50,000, I would be, if we amended, if Bruce amended his motion to reduce that 50,000 while increasing the other 50,000, I would go along with that motion.
Any changes?
I'm not. CJ asked, so I respond that I'm not amenable.
Given that we're looking at, what I'm hearing you say is 50,000 out of capital on the school side, and another chunk of upwards of 77,000 remaining as a reduction on the operating?
No, I'm not talking about that right now, I was bringing up changing, Bruce's motion was to put 50,000 back in the school technology, and I was taking it out of the classroom, so it's keeping the school capital flat from where we had it earlier, and that's 77,000, yes, out of their 67,785,605 budget, yes.
Any, yes.
Madam Chair, Joe has projected that at the end of this year, it will be a 1.9 million dollar, I don't know if transfer is the right word, but a transfer to fund balance. My understanding of fund balance is that it is something that can be used for one-time projects, for economic growth, or improvements in purchase of property for the first time. We do already have, in the town manager's proposed budget, a $700,000 reallocation of fund balance for Parsons. In light of the fact that we're projecting a 1.9 million dollar addition to that, I would be amenable to transferring an additional sum from fund balance to cover, to reallocate, I guess is the right word, towards a, one of the larger capital projects.
Other comments?
Madam Chair, I think, knowing that there is that additional fund balance increase, I would be supportive in moving some of that to support something like that in our capital improvement.
Joe, can you tell us what it is that, where we are with fund balance, before we start throwing the numbers around?
Yeah, I think I sent everybody's spreadsheet yesterday. This is... It should be similar to what I sent you yesterday. Basically, the fund balance at June 30th of 2018 was 14.4 million dollars, and on your current, your budget, that represents 13.6% of your operating budget. So, if you take that and carry it forward, projecting a 1.9 million dollar positive result or surplus this year, brings your fund balance at June 30th to 16,360,000 dollars. The manager's recommended 700,000 come out, which brings your projected fund balance down to 15.6 million dollars. On your, on the manager's proposed budget, that 15.6 would equal a 14% increase. You're now currently... You're now, you're now at what, you're at a 111? Actually, I don't know where you are right now. Say you're at a 1, 100 and... I think you're, I think you're at, right now, 111,363. So, right now, your fund balance, with the 700,000 coming out, your fund balance would be at 14.1%.
Yes.
Joe, if that 700,000 were changed just for round numbers to 1 million, what does that do?
Brings you to a 13.8% fund balance.
So, still above where we are right now? Assuming...
Yes, you're at 13.6 right now. Assuming I'm...
Right.
Assuming I'm a good forecaster, you would be at 13.8.
And, Madam Chair?
Yes.
We have a policy of now, as a goal, 12 to 15.
12 to 15.
So, that keeps us, keeps us increasing it and keeps us within the policy?
Okay. I'll just say that I, I was hoping to keep, not to take anything out of our fund balance, unless there was a, a big reason, like the Parsons corner, and my thinking is that we're going to need more of that in the future, and I look at fund balance as something to use for bigger items, and I think we have some bigger items looming. The other thing is, I don't think in the next couple of years, we're going to be seeing much of an increase in our grant list, we didn't see much this year, we saw a little bit, and I also don't think we're going to see any increase in, in grant funds. In fact, I think that if we receive what the governor says we're going to receive, which is where our budget is, we didn't, we didn't budget more ultra-conservative this year. We're right on target with what we're supposed to get as of this moment, and my concern is that in the future, we're not going to see that. So, as our budgets increase, our fund balance number is not going to be increasing, because we're just not going to see the monies that we had in those areas to really replenish it, and I'm proud that we did the last two years, so it concerns me for items, these small items, that we're looking to that right now. I think we have a lot to do in town with some, like I say, the Farmington Center Committee, and with other items with, so I just, I feel I'd rather look at tightening our belt a little bit in our own budgets, and I don't think that, I think postponing some things a little bit isn't a bad thing. So, we've already been doing a little of that, and I think that, that we can continue to do that with these, we're looking at a $50,000 number, so, yes.
One other point, kind of to your point, that we're not really expecting to increase this fund balance over the ensuing years, if our budget next year goes up another 3%, this fund balance, I believe, drops down to 3.4%, and each year that the budget increases, the fund balance, if it does not change, will reduce in the percentage. So, by doing nothing, the fund balance gets reduced automatically, so although we're going in the right direction, bringing it to a 3.8, and that is an ever-so-slight increase over last year's, we have an opportunity to bring it up to the 14%, and that would keep us, I believe, closer to that 3.6, if there's a 3% increase, and we have no addition to the fund balance next year.
Ed, Edward?
Yes, so, I think we've made great progress with the fund balance, and I want to see us keep moving forward to some degree, but our goal was, the top of our goal was 15%, that was the policy that we agreed on, and we're making great progress towards reaching that, and, you know, within, within a couple of years, a few years, you know, we could be there. What I'd like to see, Joe, is, I was thinking of a number, so you have a million dollars in there right now, so there's 700,000 is Parsons, and then 300,000 is something else. Can you change that to 1,075,000, and then I'll explain what my thought process is? So, 1,075,000, that's the 700 for the Parsons, and then I'm going to suggest 275,000 for school security, as well as 100,000 for the Farmington Center improvements, and the Farmington Center improvements, that is economic development, so I think that absolutely, you know, falls into the definition of what, something you would fund with fund balance. And then the security being, I almost see the security as being, you know, it's a security item, almost an emergency item, just in the, the state of where, you know, school safety is in, in, in the modern day that we're in right now, so I just want to throw that out on the table and see what people's thoughts are on doing something like that with the fund balance.
Could I just have some clarity, just for a minute? So, Edward, what you described, so then, that school security is 275,000?
Yes.
And so, are you saying that you want to use part of the fund balance for that?
Yes.
So, that 275 is deleted out?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
As well as...
Well, it's not a G, it's a V.
Okay, so...
You're not adding 275 to the 275 that's already there, you're just substituting the funding for the 275?
Yes, exactly, yes.
Okay.
And the same thing with the parse, the Village Center?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, that, so you put that in, and that brings us to 3.7%, which is, yeah, sorry, 13.7%, which is above the 13.6% we're at, so we're still making progress in the right direction towards that policy goal of 15%.
I, I just have to say first that I don't think that, I don't, my point earlier was that I don't think we're going to make headway in the next few years, that this, this is not going to continue to grow like we did with 1.2 million this year, 1 point, I just don't see that happening, and I think that what's also going to happen is, we, if, with all the, the conversations out there with the schools, and what's going to happen in the future, is our bonding is not going to be what it was, and I am really going to be, I'm particularly careful of this, because I think that we're going to have to go to this in some ways, for schools where we're not going to be bonded anymore. Farmington isn't going to be a community that's going to be, going to be accepted for bonding as much as it was in the past, and I think that's clear out there with the, the conversations and some of the legislative commissions I was watching the other day. So, I don't feel at all that we can, that this number is going to continue to go up. We'll be lucky if our grant list does go up some, I expect it to go up some, but not significantly like we had it before. So, I just, I don't feel that this is an area, and absolutely, I agree with security, or we wouldn't, we would have touched it. We never even touched the security piece in here, and I think the council knows full well and feels strongly that we need to do those things in the schools, so that's not, not a question at all. But I think we need to just look at, look deeper in what we're doing, and we, this all started with a $50,000 number, which I think this is really, $50,000 in a budget, and I will say again, I'll add one more thing, even my conversation with the 2.9 for the schools, it's 77,000, that's true, but it's a six, almost a $68 million budget, and I have full faith that the school will be able to adjust 77,000 in a $68 million budget, for us to, to bring it down a little bit, so that I think it's more palatable for our community, the bottom line. So, that's a few thoughts. Oh, go ahead.
So, I guess, my thinking on this is that, in the past two years, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, between one year putting 2.4 million into fund balance, and then projected 1.9 this year, that's over $3 million that we've taxed people in Farmington for expenditures that didn't happen, and I understand there was a lot in question with state budget a couple of years ago, and kind of that very cautious, conservative budgeting got us to this point. We have a 256,000 kind of set aside for what might happen with teachers' retirement, from states putting that onto the municipalities. So, I guess, I look at this as, if it affects this year, what we're able to do, capital, operating, keeping things on even keel, it offers some relief to the taxpayers to do what we need to do, based on what they've paid in the past couple of years that we didn't use, while still, as Edward pointed out, making progress on our fund balance. And I think when we get too far into projecting what's not going to happen, what money we're not going to get, is kind of how we got here. So, I just, I want to find that balance there, in terms of kind of worst-case scenario budgeting, and being mindful of what the taxpayers have already given, that we haven't used.
CJ?
And I appreciate being mindful of the taxpayers' dollars here, and the projecting, I think this year, we've done it significantly different in the last two years, we have not projected the reductions that we were forewarned about from our representatives, because they said we shouldn't be concerned about that, so we were fully expecting to get much more funding this year than we were anticipating in the previous years. The concept that we're making headway, I think, is incorrect, I think we've made headway, and as I pointed out earlier, with each increasing budget, we go backwards. We have a line item that's not showing on the screen right now, for teachers' retirement, 256,000 in our operating budget, which will be 500 and something if they pass that bill, and a million after that, and more every year after that. We know there are some very large line items that will potentially be appearing that we don't see now. We've also been forewarned that taking money out of this fund for operating expenses, which would be things like school security, is not always looked well upon by the bond rating agencies. If it's a one-time issue like a Parsons, when we discussed that, that's also talking about a one-time, more temporary issue, because we'd be talking about buying a Parsons property to sell to do a developer, and getting, if not all of that money back, maybe more if we worked it out very well, but a substantial amount of that money back, so we're in essence loaning ourselves money in that situation. So, I do not agree with taking more money out, rather than less money out, for the village and the school security project.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, I just wanted to say a couple things, since CJ had brought it up, the, the security and using fund balance to, perhaps, it may not look favorable, so there, there may be a difference of opinion on that. I think, when we look at fund balance, we think of, when we had the security, the AAA bond rating agency person here, the, the last time, they did indicate that, you know, for economic development, it's not necessarily looked negatively towards the fund balance, if we use that to promote economic growth, so that's part of the reason why the, the Parson purchases in there, as well as, when, when I think about the fund balance, we think about emergencies and, and issues that may be happening, and, and we've all talked about things that are happening in, in our community, you know, it's not just the schools, it's every part of our community, and I think security is a very valid, and I know we all agree that, we feel that security should be going through, and I don't think that if we did decide to use part of the fund balance to support that initiative, would be looked negatively on our community to protect the residents of our community. So, I, I just, it's a matter of difference of opinion, so, you know, economic development is one thing that looked favorably, and I think from things that are going on in our, in our community, we need to be aware of it, so, and I think that's, that's where I stand.
I don't disagree, I mean, I think both points are valid, and for me, it comes down to more, and it kind of bring back one of, an item Beth brought up, with overtaxing the taxpayers, and, you know, being respectful of that, and, you know, when we make conservative assumptions with things like the state grants, and things that are unknown, and there's money left, and that goes surplus, that's, that helps us build up our reserve, that money does not get spent. You know, we identified this year that we also make some very conservative assumptions in some of our operating expenditures, specifically salaries, and that increase is not entirely contractual, part of it is, but there's a lot of assumptions being made, and those assumptions are conservative, that we're not going to have pregnancies, we're not, you know, that everything's going to be worst-case scenario from a budgetary perspective, and what we've seen consistently is, that wasn't the case, and there was a hot account, or however it's worth, a surplus, that doesn't go into the general fund, but that money gets spread and spent throughout other areas of the budget, so that's a lot less obvious, but there are some extras there, too, so I would be more in an effort, you know, compromising, and, you know, this is still probably higher than I'd be comfortable with, but if, if this whole discussion is to avoid changing the 3.02, that's not going to personally get me to where I would need to be, to make this completely unanimous, personally.
Can I just?
Well, the budget proposal, where we had previously agreed on the capital, and gone through, which led to, it was 111 million, 363 plus, which was a...
I'm sorry, I just clarify that.
111 million, 363. 111,363, five...
It's 111,391,077 right now.
391.
Thank you, Joe, very much.
The original number had the $77,000 reduction to the board.
Well, is that the one with the million in versus the 700,000?
That number right there, the 111,391,077, is where you are right now.
And that's the one that leads to a .95?
Correct.
Tax increase?
I don't know what that does for a tax increase.
I think you've got that from the same spreadsheet that led to a 2.02.
No, you've done a couple of gyrations.
Well, you want to go back to the tax spreadsheet? Why don't you pull up the tax spreadsheet? But the point being, the previous motion I had made included all the school security we were looking for. It included that, I believe we had that $100,000 in there for Farmington Center improvements, and still only led to a 2.95 tax increase. The request I was making, again, was, yes, it was towards the operating budget of the Board of Education to reduce it a .013 percent, which I don't think is a large request. So I think we can do all the things we've spoken, reducing from the 3.02 to 2.9.
Okay.
So .12 percent.
Okay.
77,500.
Yes, correct.
So maybe what might be helpful is if we can get some feedback about what that would look like because we heard what would... We got a little bit of feedback from the superintendent about... I'm not sure how we started that discussion, but I heard 33,000 would come out of equipment. It would kind of eliminate or defer that one-on-one Chromebook program. But now if we're talking about 77,000, that's much larger.
Well, but it's over a 67.6 million dollars.
67.785605.
67.8 million dollar budget, $77,000.
I understand the math, but I think it's important as a council to hear what the consequences or the ramifications of a reduction of that nature might mean. And I know the superintendent's limited because she has to answer to the board and that would be a board decision, but I would want to hear that.
Okay.
I respect that it's a big budget, but $77,000, I'm not sure with, we know how much is tied up in contractual and the transportation contract that's new this year. And we did the math. I think it is a big number and I'm just concerned about what that means and I want to consider that for the parents of schoolchildren, for the teachers and the school staff.
Oh, wait. Sorry.
You had a clarification, excuse me, Beth. You had a clarification, Bruce.
Yeah. Of course, because I'm hearing that CJ wants... Not CJ, Paul wants to ask another question, but before we go any further, I wanted to ask a clarification from Paul in terms of our discussion you were talking about if this process was to not touch operating, you wouldn't support this. And was that what you were saying?
I didn't say that explicitly.
Yeah, it was going too long, so I was forgetting what you said, so.
I think I worded it in a way to come to a compromise that would yield the unanimous vote.
Right.
You know, some of my numbers are much lower than this. I could come up to that number, but I'm not sure I could go above that. So I'm hoping we...
Go above what?
The 2.9 number.
The 2.9, oh, got it, okay.
And I guess what I was going to just kind of clarify on my end is it's... I think to answer your question, Beth, is we don't... Because I had asked the question during the workshops, what would the target look like? And we got a conceptual layout. That would have been a 2.5, much lower than a 2.9. There is a chance, depending on how some of these assumptions go, and historically, if what happened the last four years, three years, whatever, happens this year, there's a chance... My understanding is it wouldn't make any difference. It wouldn't be any reduction of anything to go to a 2.9. It could, but again, we're making very conservative assumptions by assuming everything's going to be a worst-case scenario from a budgetary perspective.
Well, we go with the information that we are given. We're making a decision, right?
Similar to what we do with the governor's budget, it's kind of the same logic, I know. The difference is, though, with the governor's budget, when we get more than he says, that goes to reserve balance, whereas this doesn't, like, it's not like we ever seem to get a lot more back. That money always gets spent throughout the system.
Can I just clarify? So if what we're... Or what is on the table or discussion, because my motion is still open, I guess, what's on the discussion is that if we did add the, what was it, the 375,000, I think Edward had suggested, that is at least 700,000 when we do purchase the Parsons and we do do something with it, that that's coming back to the reserve. So, and then... So it's not... I guess what I wanted to try to... Is that what you're talking about? Stuff does come back and potentially the 256, if that doesn't realize, that will come back as well. So now you're looking at close to $1 million coming back in, even though we might have taken it out.
Correct.
You're saying the 256 of the teacher retirement?
If it doesn't come through. In other words, if the state...
Bill doesn't get passed.
Yeah, if it doesn't pass. Because CJ says if it doesn't pass, we don't know.
We have it in our budget now to be paid out under cash.
Yeah, I understand that with the expectation that in years to come, it's just our own philosophy. In years to come, I think it's going to be increased and increased and increased.
Well, we have to get... The first step is that it goes through the legislature this year.
Right.
Which we don't know. But that's what this number is based on. We're dealing with this year.
So that's why we should be looking at this as a definite at this point, just like we did with our grants. That's why the grants are the way they are.
Well, that's fine. I mean, that is...
I mean, if it does come back, I'll be cheering. I'll be the first one to stand out at the bridge and, you know.
I guess that's why I threw that out there because I think that that is a possibility. Even though it's on here for this year, that is a possibility that our legislators are saying... They've sat here and they said that's not going to happen, although the governor did put it in his proposed budget. So we're putting it in our budget because he put it in his budget. But at the end of the day, our legislators have to vote on it and we don't know that answer until...
Right, that is correct. I can't say for sure.
Right.
But if it weren't to go through, it was said, that goes to fund balance.
Correct. My point saying, and that's what I wanted to try to understand with, from you, Paul, that will come back.
Correct. And I'm just, I guess, saying, the first part of what I said was, I'm looking for these efficiencies on all the line items and all four, or I guess five of the line items is where I'm going to balance this out, is where I am in basically.
And I think as purpose of discussion, I think that I'm asking to postpone the expenditures because we will visit that and I guess we're not necessarily ruling out any reduction from an operating perspective.
Okay. So this is potentially both?
Correct.
Not instead of?
Correct.
Okay, now we'll go back to what Beth was talking about. And she was asking about the 77,000 and where that would come from. And I will ask you, Kathy, but I don't want to put you on the spot either with your board or whatever, but it's out of the... I mean, you may take something out of each account or you may, you know, or I don't know how you, you know, whatever, but you can...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could I ask that in a different way?
Yeah.
In this budget, the size you have it right now, could you foresee a scenario where your budget was reduced by that 77,000 and change and it had little or no substantial effect on the overall budget and spending of the school system?
So whenever we make a reduction, and if the town council makes a reduction, we will make that reduction Monday night. That's our process. Because we have to know in the public of which areas of our budget are being reduced. That's important and they've been...
Of course.
So typically, for those who have been on the board or have been part of budget process in the past, we usually provide a level one reduction list, a level two. So level one is the least significant, and then we go up to level two, which is a little more significant, and then level three is the most significant impacting programs and students. And so I would, at a $77,000 reduction, would be looking at more of a level one list of reduction. I had already thought about this because I was asked if it was at the top end of the target, what would it be? So we do have an idea of what that would be, but we would keep it as far away from our students as possible.
Okay, so the 77-plus thousand would be basically what, every year when you come forward, and I appreciate that, and the Board of Education, I know, has long discussions about this, any cuts, how do we keep them away from the students? And this would be the farthest away from the students. It would still be a level one. It would not be anything we would consider a... I won't say it's not substantial, it's $77,000, but it's not going to change the trajectory of the school system by reducing the 77-plus thousand.
Because we would stick with level one reduction. So the example of a Chromebooks would not be a level one. So we would not... I would be recommending reducing Chromebooks because it would have an impact on students in classrooms. So it would be things that are outside of that and not, that does not have an impact on our students. So what we call level one, least significant impact.
Thank you.
That's what I do.
And just to with, I appreciate that, the level one, two, and three, because I know, some of us know what that... And that is an amazing way to do this, where you have the level one is the farthest away from kids and that's what you want. And we're not at a level of cutting 250 or 300,000 where you have gone to, you know, where you've had to touch children in classrooms. So that's... Thank you.
That's good to hear.
Madam Chair, I call a break, please.
We're back. Now, I think we have a motion on the floor, Paula.
Yes.
Do you read it, please, so we can all remember?
To add $50,000 to school technology.
Madam Chair, I would like to amend my motion.
Okay.
I would like to amend my motion to, from 50,000 to 30,000 to the school technology.
Second.
Discussion.
I will ask the same question I did previously. Are we offsetting this with another 30,000 somewhere?
We will be revisiting the other line items that we talked about before in operating.
Okay, I'd like to have some discussions. Before I would vote in favor of this, I'd like to see what we're reducing.
I just have a point of clarification, Bruce, with your motion. Is that your full motion? Just the 30,000?
Sure. I'm going to amend my 30,000 emotion to...
It's the last amendment, amended twice.
Okay.
By Robert's rules, so.
Sure.
Get it right.
I will get it right. I... I'm going to repeat the whole thing. So I amend the emotion from 50,000 to 30,000 to add to the schools' technology, as well as I motion to increase the fund balance and reduce the capital project by $100,000 for the Farmington Center improvement projects in the planning department.
Second.
Okay, can you explain your motion now?
Yes. We're increasing the Board of Ed's technology. It was originally 450,000, so we're increasing it to another 30,000 to that 450.
So that's 480.
Yep.
Okay. That's the first piece.
Yep. And then we are reducing the CIP for the Farmington Village Center improvement in the planning department by 100,000 and increasing the fund balance...
Revenue.
Revenue. Revenue to 800,000.
Okay, and then it's actually, right, it's not, they're just changing the funding source from a...
Right, yeah. I really hate to say this, could you do it in two motions?
Can I do it in two motions?
He withdraw his first motion?
Basically, you're not going to change the $100,000, you're not changing, you still want to give $100,000 to the Farmington Center, correct? You just want to change the funding source. So what you're going to have to do is, you don't want it to come from tax dollars, you want it to come from non-tax revenues, which means fund balance appropriation, which is the category of non-tax revenues. So your first motion, you increase the BOE technology by the 30,000. Your next motion is to increase the fund balance appropriation from $700,000 to 100,000, to 800,000. And that will, in effect, do what you want to do.
Okay.
So does that then take the 100 out of... And I could be wrong, but what you're trying to do is take the 100 out of the capital.
No.
Right, take...
No, they're just changing funding sources.
Funding source.
That's all that's occurring is you're just basically going to, instead of...
Right, but this goes down 100.
The net effect is the only thing you will do is you will impact these, by virtue of these two motions, or if you do it as one motion, what you're going to do is you're going to reduce the tax increase by $70,000. So you're basically going to increase the increase in the taxes by $70,000. That would be the net effect of what comes out of these two motions.
Just like the 700 is not in our taxable income, it's in the reserve.
Exactly.
The 70,000 will now be...
Right, it's going to look like...
Yeah, I was just going to, can you put it up on there?
This is what you've done so far in the different departments. And now you add the 30,000 into capital, back into capital. And then what we're going to do is, your next motion, you would put 100,000 over here.
And then do the reduction.
And so now what happens is the town budget would be the 373, which you did so far. That doesn't change. The capital goes back up to 2968. The board, you have not done anything, too, so that would be at 67,785605. And then your non-tax revenues originally were, in Kathy's proposed budget, were 9721. They will now be 9821. And there's a $70,000 reduction in your overall... There's more than 70,000, but the 70,000 net ends up flowing into here. That's basically what you're doing.
Right, but Joe, I have a question. If you would just let, give us three minutes, we can write it out for you.
Thank you.
Let us talk about it and we'll write it out what you need to have said because I think I'm confused about something. So, but you have to reduce the cash account.
Thank you. It's still an appropriation from the general fund.
Oh, yeah, okay, right, yeah, yeah.
This is what it looks like.
Talk to me.
This is what it looks like.
Okay. Okay, so this no more...
So this number...
But part of it is going to be an O instead of a G.
No, it's not an O, it's going to be, this is what's going to happen.
Yeah, it's coming out of fund balance, it's not coming out of the general fund.
Well, technically, it flows that way. So I just want to make sure, 2968000. So this is going to turn to... 29, 2968000. And then this is going to go... 80000.
Yep.
Okay, so now...
And let's look at the tax rate.
295.
Okay.
I just, again, I'm asking like Kathy asked, why is that less 100,000 or not?
You just added 30,000 to it. You're not going to...
So that's the 30,000 for the Board of Education.
We have discussions on work.
Sure.
That's okay. Just a statement, and you all can tell me this is where we're going with this. Since we've just reduced our spending from what we'd have to increase taxes, should I assume that so we don't reduce the Board of Education budget at all?
It's going to the general fund as a revenue, so then you have to take...
You're saying that we... I'll still be revisiting the Board of Education's budget because we had a comment when we asked the superintendent that reducing the Board of Education budget, 77,000 and change, would have no substantial impact on her budget. So I will still be bringing that forward, whether we reduce 70,000 here.
It's not going to reduce this number. It's going to reduce the overall...
But it'll reduce the tax.
It reduces the tax rate.
Does it reduce capital, reduces the tax rate?
We're looking at the...
Okay.
That's not a bad way to do it, then. No, okay, all right, okay. All right, well, let's write it down for you. We'll write it down, I got it.
We're not ignoring.
So... Motion one would be, and it would be to... So what is the first thing they're doing?
Going to increase the...
Going to increase the Board of Ed technology count by $30,000 to bring it to 480,000.
$30,000 to bring to 480,000. That's motion 1.
And then the second motion would be increase the fund balance appropriation by $100,000 to 800,000.
Appropriation to 800,000. Just that's just a...
It's quality TV they're getting it on.
All right, so this is what it looks like on the board.
Okay.
Is this one motion now, Kathy?
I, we did it as... Can you do it as, you'd rather have it as 2?
I'd rather have it as 2, because you're affecting two different things.
Okay.
Do we have any motion yet on the floor? Pardon me, Paula?
Why don't you pull everything off? The original amendment was to increase, add 30,000 back in. If we stuck to the original amendment, we could do that, and then you could do the 100,000 afterwards.
Right.
Okay. I don't know why...
So are we on... Excuse me, I'm sorry, but I've got to go back to...
The motion that had been on the floor before you had your recess...
Was 50,000.
To increase, to add 50,000 back to the Board of Ed Technology. And then we're going to make an amendment to make the increase $30,000 back to...
Okay, okay.
And that's what I originally said, right?
Right.
So that's on the floor right now, so the motion's been made?
Yes.
Okay.
With the amendment.
Amendment.
Okay. So first, we have to vote on the amendment.
Should I read it again?
I don't think she, he needs to read it again, do you?
It's the same.
The same.
Okay. So this is an amendment to add 30,000 to the Board of Education's technology budget.
Bring it up to...
To bring it to 480,000. Okay. Discussion on the amendment.
I assume, since we're doing this amendment in conjunction with the reducing 100 from that, I'm not a big fan of reducing the 100,000, but I don't see any material differences here. I'm fine with going up 30.
Okay, and anything else? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, amendment passes. So now we have the main motion. Has amended. Now read. This, this one.
Read, read it again?
The second.
The second one.
Oh, okay.
Because you amended your 50 to 30, now you have to vote to put the 30 back in.
Okay, yeah, so...
Okay. I move to increase the Board of Ed tech, technology, to 30,000 to bring it up to 480,000.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay.
I move to increase the fund balance appropriation to 800,000.
Second.
Joe, what does that mean if we put another 100 in? We were at 14.1, I think. Are we still at 14?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If what, it's not going to take it down below 14, right?
We're at 14.
Okay. Joe, can we see it on the screen?
On the tax and budget sheet or the fund balance?
Anytime.
Fund balance, yeah, okay.
So there's your 800,000.
So we're at 14 percent.
Let me make sure your budget's still the same. You're at 11, 412. Your budget right now is at... So you're at 14 percent.
Okay. Any discussion about the 14 percent? Yes, CJ?
Again, I'll just say, the 100,000 is not a huge dollar amount coming down, out of there, but I just don't think as policy, when we can fund it through our CIP, we should, but I'm fine with going ahead if that's what the majority chooses.
And I'm going to ask the question, I don't know if it can be answered now, and it's, is, are we doing... Are we taking money out of the fund balance, one at a time now, or is this...
This is it.
This is it.
Yeah, this is everything.
Because I, my, I just want to say that I, I'm very cautious about the fund balance, and I'll repeat myself, because I think it's that important, that we have to be careful for the next few years. And with whatever happens this year, we still have to be careful. Because as we, our budgets increase, which they will, the fund balance number, the percentage that we need for that, to make that 14, it changes. And it's, it's, there has to be an understanding of that, and I know we do, but... So that's all. So I think as long as we're not doing too much, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Quick question. What does this look like for our tax spreadsheet? What's the new number?
So again, going through it, Board of Ed is at 3.02 percent. Town's at 2.7 percent. Nothing to debt. Cap improvements are now at 2,968. Parsons and everything else is the same. Your bottom line budget number right now is 111,421,077. The increase to fund balance to 800,000 brings your non-tax revenues to $9.8 million. Brings you to a 2.95 percent tax increase.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion...
Wait, we have one. We didn't vote on this one yet. The 100,000, we need to vote on that.
Madam Chair, I have a point of information, or I'm not sure. Do we need to specify as part of this motion that the Farmington Center would be funded from fund balance? Do we need to change? Okay, thank you.
So it's just going to, the letter will be different. It'll be an O as opposed to bonding or...
That's just...
So that, it's still in the, but what, your point is well taken, Patty, that we want to make sure it's there so we know that there's money, that's where it goes.
Yep.
Okay.
Actually, it didn't change.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Madam Chair? And Joe, do you mind pulling up the tax work, the top of the tax worksheet? Thank you. I move to make a motion to fund the education to 67,000, 67,735,605. I move to fund...
I'm sorry, Bruce, one more time.
as well as the town, 30,373,104. I have to talk about debt services, too. So debt services would be 9,298,362. The capital improvement will be 2,000,000... 2,968. The CIP for the Parsons purchase would be $700,000. The BOE defined contribution would be $40,000. And the teachers' retirement would be 256,006 with a total of 100 and... You're going to have to help me with the math.
No, no.
Took 50 out of them.
50 out. 111, 371, 077.
I'm sorry. You did a, I thought maybe that was a mistake.
No.
Thank you.
There we go.
So it's 111,371,000 and 77,000 with...
That's it.
That's it.
Can we see the...
Now, we want to see the bottom.
Yeah.
2.9. It was this.
So that's your motion?
That's my motion with the tax increases.
Yep, second.
Okay.
Could I, it's going to be a little different, but could I call for a quick break?
Oh, sure. Okay, we're back. We have a motion on the floor. And Paula, would you read the motion, please? Or do we have it?
It's, it's, this is the motion.
Oh, this is the, okay. The budget, it's on the screen. We don't have to read all the numbers again.
So this is the motion right here.
CJ?
Could we see that 800,000, that we changed to 700 to 800,000? Could we see what this looks like with that back at 700,000 and keeping the number back into the, this year's budget, basically? At 100,000.
Do you want...
Farmington Center improvements.
You want the fund balance to be $700,000?
Yeah, I just want to see what it looks like with the fund balance at 700, coming out, instead of 800, coming out.
Okay, so that brings that back down to 97, and brings your tax flat 3 percent tax increase.
See, my opinion in what we're doing here is not fully transparent. We're just shuffling money from one place to the other to make that bottom line look better. But so be it. That's, I think we'd be better off if we kept the 77,000 and changed that the Board of Educat, the superintendent has said will not have impact. It's a first line, and that would keep us down. I believe it was still at 295 with that out, and that number at 700. And I think that would be the more responsible way to go, in my opinion.
Paul?
Going to echo a lot of that. And for me personally, and I know a lot of this is outside of my comfort zone, but if we can agree to the 2.9 we were originally talking about and keeping that, you know, what's showing 3 percent right now, you know, lower. I know we have the extra 100 in there, too. I can, I can support that. I can commit to supporting that budget the way it looks. I don't want to support something that I feel is a not transparent way to get below 3 percent.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, could Paul reiterate? I didn't understand what, when you say I could support that budget.
I could support it...
Which one are you referring to?
The one with 2.9. And I want to point out the, you know, we asked the superintendent, she said that, that amount will have minimal impact to students, if any at all. And all we're essentially doing, I think, is adding 20,000 back into that. So essentially, now we're talking about $20,000, I think, or $30,000.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's $50,000 because we added 30,000 back on capital improvement, as well as...
So the operating right now, that 0.04, to go from 2.94 to 2.9, that's what I'm talking about.
In the expenditures?
Yes.
Yes.
You mean, you mean so that if the Board of Ed were at 2.9?
Correct.
And what would that be, Joe?
It was a 77,000.
That was, that was the 77,000 we, we talked about.
And we took 50 instead of...
Right now, the motion says 50.
Well, we did that, right?
Yeah.
So if we, if we went with this new motion, my point is, we're, we're talking about $20,000 on that line, if my math is right, 27,000.
Yeah, maybe I can talk about maybe why that is. Because as much as we heard that Tier 1 stays away from students, it's been my, kind of what I've learned over the years is even first-tier cuts, it affects teachers, it affects, you know, administrators, possibly programs. And so it has an indirect effect on students. But I think when the superintendent talks about keeping it away from affecting students, that's class size, you know, cutting teachers, which increases class size and maybe specific one-on-one programs or paraprofessionals or staffing. But I think there still is an effect on our school system, and it might just be in a different place. But I think it's meaningful. And so to try to keep that as whole as possible is part of a compromise. That's what we came up with.
Okay. Just out of curiosity before you... Could you just change, reduce that by another 27,000 on the Board of Education? See what that one looks like on the bottom line? So 67, 718, 605?
On the bottom line?
Yeah, tax, just the taxes.
Gives them the 2.9 percent increase. And it brings your... Tax increase to 2.88 percent.
Is that with the 800,000?
Yes, with the 800,000, yes.
Okay. And what is it with the 700,000?
2.98 percent.
In the interest of compromise, I would be comfortable with moving the 100,000, making that number 800, if we could reduce the education by that additional 27,000. And if we could do that, I would be very comfortable with this, and I would be a yes vote.
And I, just to talk about the 27,000, I think that I would have full confidence that the superintendent can handle $27,000 in her, in her budget. And she said that to us, that it will be at Tier 1. I was on the board, too. I know what Tier 1 means, and when you're looking at all that, it does not mean the teachers, it does not mean, if we were cutting a couple hundred thousand, it'd be one thing. That would be significant into programs and into, to teachers. But $27,000 in this size budget for the, the... The benefit of compromise here at the table, I just, I would ask that you consider that. And it brings it to 288, but it's only 27,000. And I know that everything, every penny is, is important. I understand that, but I think that's, would be a great compromise today. And CJ?
And just with that in mind, the 50 that you were proposing to reduce was also offset by 30 that you were adding. So you really only reduced the overall budget by 20,000 from where we were earlier. So now, if you add in that 27, you've only reduced the budget 47,000 out of, again, 67,735,605. It's a very small fractional percent. I think it's very reasonable. I think the Board of Education will do a tremendous job with that amount. The town will stay hold. I think we'll be in a great place.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I appreciate that 27,000 seems like a compromise. At the beginning of the conversation about Board of Ed operating, I said I was not comfortable with any reduction to Board of Ed operating. So I think a reduction of $50,000 is already a compromise.
But you're discounting the 30 you've added into their other budget. So you've compromised by taking 30 out of one pocket, putting 50 in another. The net is 20,000.
I'm going to call another break.
Okay. Okay, we're back. So we have, at this point, we have a motion on the floor, correct?
That's correct. And do we need to recap the motion?
It's this one, yeah.
Okay. So CJ, with the spirit of compromising, we will adjust... I will amend my motion to, and I don't want to take CJ's math. I want to take the 27,000 added to my 50,000, which would be $77,000, is it?
Okay, so let's...
Joe will figure it out, just...
Let's do it clean, then. Let's say...
Let's reduce it another $25,000.
Just so that none of us screw up.
He says 27. So we're reducing it another $27,000. It's, it's 77,000.
Total now.
In total now.
In total.
Okay. So if you look at this little column here, 67,708,605, that's the original board-proposed budget of 67,785,605, minus 77,000.
Yes.
Gives you 607,708,605, which I will now plug in here.
Thank you.
And that's, gives you your 2.9%.
Yep.
So at the bottom, we're now at 2.88?
2.88.
So now that's an amendment to the, or...
My original.
Okay.
Motion. There was a lot there.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion, Patty?
Madam Chair, I'm, I still think that the Board of Ed Education operating, Board of Ed operating budget could be funded at the full requested value, however, I do see value in seeking compromise and taking into other opinions and moving forward with something that we can all agree is appropriate and, while still preserving the town's educational services at the levels that our town currently expects, and based on the superintendent's representations that these would be level-one reductions, if that's the right word, I would, I'm hoping that impact will be minimal, and I can support this budget.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, I would, I would echo that from Patty, just, you know, I'm also a little bit out of my comfort zone, probably for some different reasons, but I like the idea of a compromise, and if it's any consolation to you, Patty, I'm also outside, we always talk about this privately, but I'm outside that comfort zone, but I like the idea of a compromise, so I can support this, as it is.
Other, CJ?
Yeah, I appreciate that amendment, that does make me feel more comfortable, and again, the process of listening and the give and take throughout this, there were a number of things walking into these hearings and prior that I was not so comfortable with, that I have, in some situations, gotten more information and become more comfortable. Again, the only thing I'm not as comfortable with is that 100,000, but I'm fine with that in the spirit of compromise. I think this is a good, solid budget that I think we should be moving forward, the amendment.
Other comments? Beth?
Just to chime in here, I think compromise is actually absolutely important, and a part of that is walking away not feeling great, but knowing that you went through a process and listened and maybe kept an open mind to get there, and I think the spirit of bipartisanship is, is really important, and I think that can be something that this council is promoting and working under and getting results with, and that's really something to be said. And again, I hope any reductions we've made in moving things around and trying to be creative and making sure that the needs are addressed and that we have some growth and we're tackling our capital needs, I hope that's, you know, as this budget year moves forward, that's, that's what happens, and we're in a good place.
Any other, Edward?
Yeah, just echoing some of the similar comments from my colleagues up here, I think it's nice to see that we're all able to come together in, in some compromise on this budget. I like that we're certainly maintaining all the services, we're not cutting any services, and on the town side, there were some things we actually put back in that relate to, like the newsletters and the, the Sheros and some of the other things that, that we thought were important, so I like seeing that back in there. We're making good progress in the CIP, and we're making good progress with our fund balance, because that's going to be at a 14% as well, so I think just thinking about all those things, I'm very happy with where this budget is right now.
Yeah, and I know it's my motion, but I would like to say that there was a lot of compromise, give and take, and I think, and a lot of work that has been done between, you know, the Board of Ed as well as the town, I know that there was a lot of questions and a lot of asks from, from both of you guys, and I think, for the most part, we got everything that we needed to make our informed decision, and, you know, I definitely can support this budget moving forward.
And I'll just be the last one to say that I think, you know, I'm really proud of our council and our Board of Education and the town for working together. I mean, we all work together on this every day with more information, with trying to compromise and, and with each other, but also with the board and the council and the, and the town manager of how to work through this and how to make it palatable for the community, and maintain our core services and have a great school system. And I have confidence in both our town manager and her staff, and our superintendent and her staff, that this will all work and we'll be moving forward, not just standing still, but moving forward for our town with what we're moving on today, that will go to the public soon. So, thank you all, and thank you all for your hard work, too, so.
With that said, a motion for the, oh, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? And then we're on the main motion. Any discussion?
Can we all repeat what we just had?
All those in favor, this will be repeating it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. And now, we will move on to the questions. The warning.
The warning.
I mean, the warning. Now, we should all have that in front of us, the warning for the town of Farmington. You want me to just kind of go? Yes, why don't you, Kathy? Just so, so now you're going to have some questions. This is the warning, so you, you're going to appropriate 1.990 million, and I'm just summarizing it, because we've talked about it, for infrastructure improvements at various schools, including the office, relocation of offices at East Farm School, elevator replacement at Union School, West Woods dehumidification design, heating and air conditioning, RTU replacement at Irving A. Robin School, and Noah Wallace air conditioning improvements. So that's that lump sum of the 1.9 million for that. That's going to be one question. To appropriate 2 million, and that's for the roads, the road project, that's 2 million for that, and then lastly, it's 1.5 million for the fire truck, the ladder truck. So that's your warning, and don't leave, we have, you're going to have to sign it before everyone leaves.
We have a discussion on that warning?
Yeah. Go right ahead.
I think this will come as no surprise to anyone sitting here. The 2 million cost of repairs for the roads, I would like to reduce that to 1,990, for all the same reason that I've stated in the past.
Is that a motion?
A motion.
Oh, second, sorry.
Need discussion?
I think I've said this with other line items, as much as I appreciate the advertising factor or the psychological, potential psychological factor, I saw the look on some of the town staff, too. I think this is a question that we've gotten to every other year at the same amount. So this is not a war.
Two to three million.
Two to three, okay.
I think a 2 million.
So I, I'm a little uneasy with chipping away at this for the sake of...
I think it gets confusing with the 1,999 for the roads. Other questions or comments? Yes.
I'm comfortable leaving it at 2 million. I think it's always been, my understanding is it's always been bonded between at least the 2 million, and has this, has it ever failed, the road bond?
No.
Thank you.
Don't want to even say that out loud. Bad karma.
To echo CJ a little bit, it's not that I'm necessarily worried about that failing, I'm actually, because I'm going to support all these bonding questions, and I'm worried about the impact it could have. The psychol, I, I know it's 10,000, psychological factor, and I just feel to help increase the chance that all three pass, that's why I would lean that way. I'm not saying that 10 grand's critical, but that's how I would lean as well.
Edward?
Yeah, I appreciate what you're trying to do, CJ, trying to be like a little bit strategic with, with the numbers there, but, you know, since we haven't had a bond fail before with roads, and everybody wants their roads paved, we always hear that all the time, when's my, when's my street going to be paved? I think this is, I don't think there's any risk of this not passing at the referendum, so I'm, I'm comfortable where it's at, at the 2 million.
Anyone else?
Yep.
Yes, CJ?
First of all, let's not talk about passing or not passing on anything out loud, but seeing the lack of support for my 1,990, I will remove my motion.
Thank you. So we are voting on the warning as is?
Yes. I probably have to just read this and then the numbers.
Oh. Does he have to...
Paula, can I just read the actual warning and just the numbers supporting, at a very, okay, thank you.
You, just, it's just the attached warning. Just a motion to approve.
I like that even better, thank you.
To approve the attached warning.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the warning of the April 15, 2019 annual town meeting and the April 25, 2019 referendum attach warning.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay. That's it? That's it? Okay. You just have to sign. Before we go anywhere, I will say that the Monday and Tuesday meetings are canceled, just so that everyone at home knows. And thank you all very much, and we'll move forward to our town meeting. Adjourn, a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?